Good evening, everyone. Welcome to City Council Meeting for August 11th, 2020. This meeting is being conducted in accordance with the Governor's directives. Several of those have been extended. 006 pertains to public meetings. And so this meeting is being conducted without the public present, but it is being streamed online. And we have made provisions for public comment to be made before the meeting and during the meeting. With that, items listed on the agenda may be taken out of order. Two or more agenda items for consideration may be combined, and any item on the agenda may be removed or related discussion may be delayed at any time. With that, I'll call the meeting to order, and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I guess our first order of business this evening is to have the oath administered to our new Deputy Fire Chief, Greg Chesser.
You can pull it down so people can hear you and step up to the microphone and raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Greg Chesser.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and government of the United States.
The Constitution and government of the United States.
And the Constitution and government of the State of Nevada.
The Constitution and government of the State of Nevada.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Whether domestic or foreign.
Whether domestic or foreign.
And that I will bear true faith.
I will bear true faith.
Allegiance and loyalty to the same.
Allegiance and loyalty to the same.
Any ordinance, resolution, or law.
And the ordinance, resolution, or law.
Of any state notwithstanding.
Of any state notwithstanding.
And that I will perform well and faithfully.
I will perform well and faithfully.
All the duties of Deputy Fire Chief.
All the duties of Deputy Fire Chief.
Of Boulder City, Nevada.
Of Boulder City, Nevada.
On which I am about to enter.
On which I'm about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Under the pains and penalties of perjury.
Under the pains and penalties of perjury.
Congratulations, if I could just get you to sign.
If you'd like, please say a few words.
I wouldn't expect them to do that, sir, but I'm happy to be here. Been here for a couple of weeks now. Hit the ground running with Chief Gray, and we're hoping to do a lot of great things in that department in the future.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam City Clerk, do we have any public announcements? Thank you.
Public comment.
Okay. We'll move then to public comment. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda. Public comment period is based on the rules stated in the emergency directives I indicated earlier. Each commentator will have up to five minutes. As always, we ask people to be civil and concise in their comments. Items during this period, again, are limited to those on the agenda, and the phone number to call for that is 702-589-9629.
I forgot my paper, so I'm going to read this from my phone, or attempt to, anyway. I would like to start out. Bob Fonstock, owner of BFE LLC at the airport, full-scale FBO operation. I'd like to talk in regards to, I think it's item number 19, the new fuel standards. I guess we started out the meeting kind of like the way I'd like to, where we have a new appointed official be sworn in, and the oath that he just took and the oath that the others in the city have taken should actually mean something and stand for something and be followed. I'm finding quite the contrary with my business at the airport and specifically with the fire department and city manager and city attorney. Boulder City and the managers that run the city have vindictively gone after the residents of the city as well as the operators at the airport, the main reason for the old city council getting the boot. And the new fresh faces on the council that's before me was to stop the games and a direct connection between the church and the city. The residents of B.C. have spoke and wanted the city decisions to be decided at the city courthouse and not the building locating off of Bristol Combe and Buchanan. The city attorney, the city manager have called vindictive, dangerous, and uncalled-for COVID city council meetings to go after B.C. businesses that are in full compliance with the law. The new proposed rules haven't been discussed at the A.C. meeting, and the A.C. meeting, this August meeting, was canceled. The A.C. members at the last meeting they held when this was brought up suggested a working group to go through the details so this could be implemented in a seamless manner, and none of this happened. NRS 237.080, before a governing body of local government adopts the proposed rule, the governing body or designee must make a concerted effort to determine whether the proposed rule will impose a direct economic burden upon the business or directly restrict the formation, operation, or expansion of the business. The governing body is also required to notify those businesses affected so each can submit data. And of course, no one's talked to me or can talk to me. They've been using the legal things. My legal issue with the city, which has to do with specific truck and trailer, and nothing to do with 90% of the rules, they won't talk to me, period, from direction from city staff. The city has always used other airports, fees, procedures, to help guide them with the Boulder City rates, fees, and procedures. In the past two years, Boulder City has decided to make a departure from the norm and compete with its tenants selling fuel with less than 1% of all the other airports in the world in the U.S. doing this. So why Boulder City is selling fuel and competing with the tenants and only 1% of all the other other ports across the U.S. are doing it is very strange. The city has recently increased the Skydive LZ, doubling the original lease, where a piece of dirt now at the airport is leasing for more than I rent the building to skydive. Commercial building, hangar, offices is worth less than a piece of dirt at Boulder City. City's increased the private hangar owners' lease costs. The new proposal, fuel standards, also add fees and cost. City taking over the fuel farm two years ago added an increase of $0.06 for storage for the 2 million gallons of fuel that the airport flows. The city airport has added staff and, to date, has not made one adjustment for being overstaffed since the March 2020 COVID slowdown and the airport now operating at 25% of what it used to with the same revenues last year. The city refuses to adjust their self-serve price. You know, the city, everybody drives around and they buy gas at different gas stations. Or if you're an airplane owner, you buy gas at different airports, and people change their prices all the time because they want to stay competitive. Well, the city of Boulder City has not changed their price in three months, and it's really, really high rates. So if you want self-serve, you go to the city that just wants one thing from you, and that's as much money as they can get. During the city council airport workshop a few months back, Willie was stumbling along. Well, it was supposed to be a budget review. His stated payroll was $3,000 on the graph on the chart, but then he quickly changed it to $500,000 whenever he was asked by one of the city council members. Not once has the airport user been given a budget that has been anywhere near accurate or respectful, and these increases warrant a balanced budget and proof that the city airport actually needs more money to stay solvent. But we've never seen a balanced budget or a budget period or one that made any sense. And we see money being collected right and left, which needs justification for why we're collecting it and where it's going and what it's being used for, on top of the $2.7 billion that was granted to the city airport with the COVID.
Mr. Fonstock, please, you're over the time. If you would conclude your remarks, please.
Yeah. My main thing is, is that my business is being attacked by city staff, and I have very little recourse except for to spend, like tonight, I'll probably spend $10,000 defending myself. And the city knows that with COVID and my reduced income, I'm limited in my resources, whereas the taxpayers are going to pay the city to go after me with unlimited budget.
Again, sir, please conclude your remarks.
Yes. Please put a stop to this. Don't pass this resolution and do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, do we have someone on the line?
I had them on hold, but they hung up.
Okay. Again, the phone line is available. Anyone wishing to speak and public comment, the phone number is 702-589-9629.
Good evening. My name is Blair Davenport, and thank you for the opportunity to provide comments pertaining to Agenda Item Number 1 and 18. At the July 14th City Council Meeting, City Planning Director Michael Mayes and City Fire Chief William Gray provided an important and comprehensive update on the city's response to the COVID-19 pandemic. Unfortunately, that presentation has yet to be transcribed and has not been posted on the city's website. Video on the presentation is available, but it's not easy to locate. It's important for the city to continually share COVID-19 information with the community in a timely manner. Please consider conducting similar updates on at least a monthly basis, and please ensure COVID-19 information uploaded to the city's COVID-19 website sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Again, anyone wishing to speak, the phone number is 702-589-9629.
Public comment.
Yes, I have public comment.
Go ahead.
Yes, good evening, Council. For the record, Fred Volz. First, I will express strong support for Agenda Item Number 12 that creates a voluntary mounted police unit in Boulder City. It is a cost-effective way of offering public safety services in remote parts of the mountains and desert on the periphery of our developed community. It also means spending substantially less public money on expensive-to-acquire-and-maintain motorized vehicles designed for off-road use that tear up fragile land surfaces. Reviewing the proposed airport fueling standards, a significant omission of surfaces in Item 17's proposed document. While the city manager and his airport manager impose numerous requirements on airport users, there is no explicit requirement that city airport staff must follow the same standards. If the standards are so important and so universally accepted, why aren't city airport operations also compelled to comply? Who would supervise and ensure the city's compliance with its own standards? The proposed document addresses neither of these issues. Given the airport's poor customer relations because of the inconsistently handled hangar lease problem, the unrepaired city fueling facilities that unfairly and inefficiently compete with private licensees performing the same services at the airport, and the alienation of the skydiving business at the city airport, it is clear that airport management, and by extension, the city manager, have made one blunder after another in providing airport services. These fueling guidelines need further reworking to include the city's airport operations and provide sufficient oversight of the city's activities. Perhaps the compliance paperwork generated by airport staff for their operations should be submitted to the Airport Advisory Committee for periodic review and approval. Lastly, it is of the utmost importance that the city council, and by extension, city residents and business owners, are protected from the frivolous lawsuit recently filed by the city manager and city attorney through approval of Agenda Item Number 23. The city manager and city attorney fear a public reckoning over their less-than-satisfactory job performance. Beyond the frivolous lawsuit, a defeated former city council member filed a rejected open-meeting law complaint last October with the state attorney general to delay any reckoning of the inadequate job performance. While a court of law will adjudicate the merits and demerits of the lawsuit, the city manager and city attorney do not have the best interests of this community in mind by pursuing their litigation. Instead, they are hoping to score a big financial settlement paid for by city residents and business owners. The city council must defend itself and the community. Public service, not self-service, is supposed to be the standard by which competent public employees operate, and I would ask that my comments be added to the record verbatim. I will forward them to the city clerk. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, anyone wishing to comment, the phone number is 702-589-9629. Phone number is 702-589-9629.
Public comment.
Yes, I have public comment.
Go ahead.
Hi, this is Judy DeShane. My comments are Items, or excuse me, Item 12. I am in favor of the mounted police patrol. The citizens of Boulder City have pretty consistently supported them financially, just as they did the police dogs, by providing bulletproof vests, so something that the community, the citizens themselves, like. I think it's very worthwhile, and it should be approved. Item 17, the airport fueling, I am not in favor of you okaying that. I think there are too many questions and too many things up in the air. This should not go through at this time. Item 18, the grant money we are supposedly getting from Clark County. While I agree the city should take the money and accept it gratefully, anything helps, I do not agree with the spending of that money being totally at the discretion of the city manager. I do not have confidence in his financial management ability at all. Number 20, the, Item 20, that's for supervision for 34 children, although the packet says there's a total of 1,800 children in our schools. They're going to supervise 34. The packet is silent on how they're going to determine which kids they're going to take in. It also said, well, they checked with city employees to see who needed it. Well, if that means all 34 spots are taken by city employees, this does not seem fair or adequate in any way, shape, or form. So I would ask you to vote yes on taking the money, but amend who gets to oversee spending it. I want, I would like the council to at least have overseeing authority before any money is spent out of that grant. And number 23, I wholeheartedly support the city council receiving legal assistance to protect themselves and us, the citizens of Boulder City. I agree with Mr. Volz's comments earlier, and I think we really need to do something about it, and it needs to be not sooner rather than later, which I have said publicly before. So those are my main issues with this week's council meeting. So I appreciate your time and listening. Thank you.
Thank you. The phone line is available. Anyone wishing to call in, the phone number is 702-589-9629. Okay, if you'd like to go ahead with that. After that phone call.
Public comment.
Hi, I emailed you guys a letter today. I just wanted to make sure it's going to be right into the record.
I was just getting ready to read it, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, thanks. Bye.
This is regarding Item 17 from Kami Perkins. Dear City Council Members, we are counsel to BFE LLC. BFE has offered fueling services at the Boulder City Municipal Airport for over a decade. This will be the fourth time that the proposed aviation fuel dispensing, handling, and storage standards have been presented to you for adoption. As was the case the previous three times, the proposed standards are being submitted to you with one objective in mind, the city managers and city attorneys' desire to prevent BFE from utilizing its state-of-the-art mobile fuel tanker, which has higher safety and environmental standards than any other fuel truck at the airport. The city managers and city attorneys' motivation in preventing BFE from utilizing its mobile tanker is entirely personal in nature, has nothing to do with safety, and is exposing the city to significant liability. BFE respectfully requests that the council not adopt the aviation fuel dispensing, handling, and storage standards. If the council is inclined to adopt some form of the aviation fuel dispensing, handling, and storage standards, BFE respectfully requests that the council strike Section 3.3 contained in the current proposed draft. Section 3.3 of the currently proposed draft limits a single mobile refueler from exceeding a capacity of 4,000 gallons or total gross weight of 40,000 pounds. It limits a fuel vendor's maximum capacity of fuel to 125% of its daily fuel use requirement for all operations. It gives the airport manager the sole discretion to, at any time, approve or disapprove any and all mobile refuelers, trucks, or equipment. The sole purpose of Section 3.3 is to prevent BFE from utilizing its mobile fuel tanker. There is no evidence whatsoever that limiting mobile fuel truck capacity to 4,000 gallons or 40,000 pounds creates a safer airport. In fact, the city's own RFP in 2018 requested that the successful proposal provide one 10,000-gallon Jet A fuel truck, one 7,000-gallon Jet A fuel truck, and two 5,000-gallon Jet A fuel trucks. See Exhibit 1 at Page 20, Request for Proposals: Aviation Fuel Provider at Boulder City Municipal Airport dated May 2, 2018. Why was the city asking for fuel trucks with these capacities in 2018 and two years later wants to implement standards which would make them illegal? The city currently has the fuel to its fuel farm delivered by 10,000-gallon-capacity fuel trucks. The proposed regulations would presumably allow the city to still have its fuel delivered by 10,000-gallon-capacity fuel trucks. Why is it safe for the city to have its fuel delivered by 10,000-gallon-capacity fuel trucks, but it is not safe for a tenant to have a fuel truck holding 8,500 gallons to dispense fuel to its customers? The 4,000 limitation is not based on safety. Every time that a fuel truck has to refill at the city's fuel farm, it must drive for approximately .5 miles down the Delta taxiway each way. This heightens risk and safety concerns. A larger-capacity fuel truck actually travels less, which creates less risk. As an example, if BFE's fuel truck is filled at McCarran, it will never have to travel on the taxiway Delta in order to get fuel. Depending on its customers' needs on any given day or week, BFE will, on average, refill at McCarran one to two times per week. If it is forced to use its old 3,000-gallon-capacity truck, the same truck will have to travel down the taxiway Delta and go to the city's fuel farm three separate times per week for the same amount of fuel. This presents unnecessary risk. Fuel trucks, trailers with capacities of up to 10,000 gallons are standard in the industry and have been for the past several years and are utilized at essentially every airport of the same and even smaller size than Bvu. The manufacturer of BFE's mobile fuel tanker is Enviro Tankers, Inc. Enviro Tankers' primary customers are United States government vendors. Vendors who supply services to the United States government purchases fuel trucks identical to BFE's mobile fuel truck for use in firefighting operations. They place these fuel trucks in targeted locations where planes and helicopters used in fighting forest fires can land, refuel, and continue to be used to fight fires. If the United States government is using these exact fuel tankers in connection with fighting forest fires, they are obviously safe. The resolution you are being asked to adopt states the addition of the aviation fuel dispensing, handling, and storage standards will not adversely impact public and private airport users, fixed-base operator scenic flight, skydiving operations, or other businesses located at the airport, and states that there is negligible financial impact to airport tenants, businesses, or the Boulder City Municipal Airport. Both of the foregoing statements are incorrect. Do you want me to finish? It's two more pages.
The time limit is up on it. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have one more. Item Number 23 from Joan Payalini. Regarding Agenda Item 23, I have two questions. Before I state them, I am sure they will not be answered because they will be considered not politically correct, but be aware that I am not the only member of this community that is looking for answers to these questions. One, how did the mayor decide on this particular law firm? And two, are the members of that law firm associated with the Boulder City Alliance? Although I and many others may not get answers, our questions are on record. Joan Payalini. And that's it for the first public comment.
Thank you. And again, anyone wishing to call in, the phone number is 702-589-9629. And again, anyone wishing to call in, uh, the phone number is 702-589-9629. Again, the initial public comment period is open. Uh, the phone number is 702-589-9629. Anyone wishing to speak in the public comment period? The phone number 702-589-9629. All right, hearing no others, we will close the initial public comment period, and we will move to approval of the regular agenda. Any changes, Madam City Clerk?
Yes, Mayor, staff is requesting to remove item 21, please, in order to have more time to seek additional volunteers.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, uh, council, uh, staff is requesting to remove item number 17. Uh, also, I wanted to inform the council that I will be accusing myself for items number 12 and 23 based on, uh, the letter that I provided to the council yesterday via email.
And Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I will also be recusing myself from item number 23 due to the conflict of interest. Mr. Gary Booker, uh, will be acting in my place instead with respect to item number 23, but no changes beyond that.
Thank you. So again, then, that is items number 17 and 21 are to be removed. Thank you. Bring it back to council then for any changes.
Hey, um. Mayor, oh, sorry, I had one.
Go ahead.
Um, Mayor, I'd request that, um, item number 14 be moved to the next regular city council meeting for more time.
Um, you know, at this point, it's either a removal of the item or we hear the item and you may make a motion to hold it in abeyance.
Um, I ask it for it to be removed then at this time.
All right, and I'm also requesting, uh, the removal of item number 11, and the, um, move item 23 to be heard then before item number 12. So as in the form of a motion, I will, uh, move that the regular agenda be accepted with the removal of items number 11, 14, 17, 21, and moving item 23 then to be heard before item 12. Any other discussion?
Um, I'll second that.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's unanimous then. Hey, we'll move now to, uh, approval of the consent agenda. Madam City Clerk?
Yes, Mayor, I'm asking to remove item 1 to come back at the next regular scheduled meeting.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager?
No additional changes.
Bring it back to council then. Any other changes on the consent agenda?
Sorry. Mayor, I'd ask that numbers eight and nine be moved to the regular agenda.
Any other changes? Do you wish to make a motion then?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent with changes.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right then, we will move to, uh, item number eight. That is Resolution 7133 regarding an easement in agreement with the Clark County School District. I believe that's Mr. Latrell, who's probably running upstairs right now.
We like to keep him in shape.
Mr. Latrell?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Ken Latrell, the Public Works Director. Uh, item number eight is Resolution 7133. Is a grant of a public utility easement for a weather monitoring station that, uh, staff in the county have been working on. Um, they want to install this weather station on the south end of the school property along Adams. And, uh, in order to power this weather station, we're asking for an easement so we can run our city power to it. I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
Mayor, I have some.
Councilmember Folda?
Thank you. Um, uh, yesterday I'd asked a couple of questions, and I'm not sure if you have the follow-up, but I'd like to see those addressed in public. Um, there's a couple of concerns about what kind of, um, because this is located right in the middle of our school, um, what kind of monitoring would be, um, on this tower and, um, kind of the background of the location of this particular project.
Um, I'll first answer the, the location. It's gonna be right at the back of the sidewalk, more or less. Um, along Adams there, it was page 86 of the packet. Eighty, yeah, 86 of the packet. So it's right on the edge of the right-of-way. Um, so we'll just need to extend the power up to that. So it's not gonna be, um, out in the middle of the school property, but it would be right on the edge. Um, and then as for the monitoring, I was asking, uh, Skip in our Public Works Department, he's the one that's been working with them. Um, and I'm not exactly sure of exactly what you mean by what type of monitoring, but I was told that he's asking them for, see if we're gonna have access to it. I know a lot of times when they install these weather stations, they put it on their county, county site so we can see, um, if there's any, uh, whatever they're monitoring for the weather.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted that to be out, um, public because there was some concern about videoing and with its location right next to the school. Um, if there's, uh, the ability for us to have it faced away from the school, um, that would probably be a priority for our community.
Yeah, as far as I know, no video, video monitoring. It's, uh, either radio monitoring so they can report back to their towers, but I'll, I'll confirm the, the video monitoring.
Thank you. That was all the questions that I had.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Um, I, I guess that does bring up a question for me then. Is this something that the school district is asking for? Or is this something some other entity is asking for?
The, the county is asking for it. Um.
Because it's not clear. It appears to be this was a, a Clark County School District project, uh, from what's in the packet at least, or the agenda title.
Um, I think the only thing it has to do with the school is it being on the school property.
Okay, so this is something then that the county has gotten permission from the school district to locate, and we're just looking to provide power to it.
That is my understanding, yes.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Entertain a motion then?
I'll move to approve Resolution number 7133.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We'll move then to item number nine.
Item number nine is Resolution 7134, another grant of public utility easement. Uh, this one is for, uh, the resident at 1570 Foothill Drive. Uh, they have, uh, recently put in additional equipment on their property, and they need to switch to three-phase power to be able to run all that equipment. Um, the way this process goes is they'll pay for the equipment, they'll pay for the installation, um, and then we'll adopt the, the new equipment into our system. The reason that, uh, we need the easement, uh, is three-phase power, a transformer is quite a bit larger than the existing power they have there. So, um, we're getting, asking for the easement from them so we can set that transformer outside of the right-of-way.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Councilmember Folda?
Thank you. Um, I know Councilwoman Bridges and I, um, had the first meeting yesterday, so I'm not sure if you were able to research this more, but we had both asked about, um, who is paying for what? And, because it wasn't quite clear from the packet, there's kind of language that makes it sound like either or. So, um, I know that, um, Paul Secur, our purchasing manager, had an actual contract. Were we able to get that information from the contract?
I haven't seen the contract yet, but, um, in talking to our utility crews, that's how these work is, because we have a few of them going on, not, not needing easements, but needing to put in, install new power. Um, everywhere, every time we do this, the owner will pay for whatever it is to install, and then we adopt it into our system.
Okay, in this case, since it's a whole transformer, will they be paying for that transformer and then we install it?
Yep.
So the cost is on them for that part?
Uh, they're not gonna pay for the transformer upfront.
Mm-hmm.
We'll buy it, we'll install everything, and then they'll be billed for the total amount.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Would you like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, Resolution 7134.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous then. Thank you, Mr. Latrell.
You're welcome.
Uh, that will then bring us to item number 23, uh, which is the retention of the law firm of Bailey Kennedy to render legal services to the city and city council. Uh, we do have Mr. Kennedy available here.
Excuse me, Mayor?
Yes.
Yes, um, I wanted to take this opportunity to disclose my conflict of interest in the pending complaint referenced in this case, and will be abstaining from deliberation and determination of this agenda item.
Thank you. Mr. Kennedy?
Uh, thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. I'm Dennis Kennedy, one of the partners in the law firm of Bailey Kennedy. And, but we want to thank you for asking us to submit a proposal for the representation of the city and the four members of the city council, members Adams, Hoskins, Folda, and Bridges. Uh, we have submitted, um, and that's in connection with the lawsuit brought by Mr. Morris and, uh, Mr. Niola. And we've submitted a proposal. It's in the form of our standard retainer agreement, uh, which I think you have. Uh, and I'm happy to answer any questions about the retainer agreement or the firm, um, for anyone who has any questions.
Thank you. And, and again, I would like to give a little background on, uh, how you came to be here today. Uh, my personal attorney had notified me of the filing of this lawsuit shortly after that occurred, and had said that, you know, it looked like there would be a need for a defense because after all, it was the city attorney and city manager who were filing the lawsuit. Um, at that time, he asked me if he would like me, him, to, uh, contact firms that might be able to handle this type of litigation. Again, it, it's the type of litigation that is not routinely handled by many firms. Uh, so he reached out, and among the firms that he contacted was Mr. Kennedy's firm. Uh, I had an opportunity to speak with them, explain what I knew of the situation, and it was agreed that we would invite, or I would invite, members of the city council to also have an opportunity to speak with, uh, the lawyers there at Bailey Kennedy. Uh, I then sent messages, uh, to the council members advising them of an urgent matter and asking them to contact me. Uh, I did receive contact from the other members of the council with the exception of, uh, Councilmember Bridges, and I had informed them of the lawsuit. None were aware of the fact at that time and that there was, uh, opportunity to get counsel, uh, from an independent firm. Uh, there is an exception in Nevada's open meeting law that allows counsel to meet to receive legal advice. Uh, that is not restricted to the legal advice from, uh, anyone who is retained, or excuse me, who is employed or under contract to the city. Uh, the open meeting law exception says we're entitled to receive legal advice. So that was done, a teleconference was arranged, uh, situation was discussed, and that's what brings us to where we're at today. Uh, clearly, this is a very important issue. Uh, we have a lawsuit filed against us by the city manager and city attorney. Uh, Pool Pact, who is the insurance provider for the city, had been notified of the action and had advised that they would not provide coverage or, uh, a law firm to represent the city in this matter. Uh, again, that brings us to where we're at tonight. Uh, I believe it's essential that the city, uh, and city council gets legal advice in this matter in an independent fashion. Uh, the charter does allow for the city council to retain a special counsel in the best interest of the city, and I believe that's what we're doing, is this is in the best interest of the city. So any other questions or comments from, uh, members of council?
I'll just comment that, that I do echo your, uh, belief that this is absolutely in the best interest of the city. We need to be able to defend ourselves in this matter.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, sir. At my age, I'd like to be defended.
All right, any other questions or comments? Again, we have had the, uh, retainer agreement sent to us and, and to be able to review. I had asked if, uh, a review of that was possible, uh, by Mr. Booker. I don't know if you've had an opportunity to review that retainer agreement?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I haven't seen any retainer agreement, but even if I were to see it, I wouldn't know what to do with it. My practice of law is very narrowly constricted. I've been one kind of a prosecutor or another for about 35, 36 years. I've been about 16 years here. I did 18 in the DA's office, and I did some while I was on the active duty army as a special assistant United States Attorney for the District of Kansas. Uh, me looking at that retainer agreement is not gonna do you any good. Uh, I'm just gonna tell you, I, I, it's beyond my, it's beyond the scope of my practice. Any good lawyer will tell you, you only do what you know. You don't try to fumble around and mess around with people's lives, and I'm not going to do that. But I am here to facilitate so you can have a meeting. But, um, the question of how things are gonna be done, I can't answer those questions because it's outside of what I do.
Well, I appreciate.
Now, I know I'm the contract prosecutor for Boulder City, but I handle the criminal matters down at the courthouse.
Thank you, and I appreciate your candor in this. Uh, I, I think that. Uh, I, I think that further points out the need for counsel to act in this matter. Uh, it is in the best interest of the city. We have not had a recommendation for a qualified counsel from elsewhere. Uh, but again, Mr. Booker, I do appreciate your candor. Is there anything with this, this item, this procedure, uh, that you believe may have an issue, have a problem with?
I'm, I'm not making a decision on it one way or the other. I'm not judging, and I'm not, I can't offer advice one way or the other, so.
Okay, well, the only reason.
I'm saying a little on that.
I, I appreciate that. And again, the only reason I'm asking is that the city attorney had designated you as, as the attorney to be here to advise us on this particular item.
Yeah, but I, I can't offer you advice on, on something that is beyond my, my, my purview.
All right, again, I do appreciate that, thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I would like to comment. Thank you so very much for being honest.
Oh, you're more than welcome. I do my best.
All right, with that, I will make a motion then that we retain uh, the law firm of Bailey Kennedy with regard to this legal matter uh, in pursuant to the retainer agreement that's contained in the agenda packet.
I would second that motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and that would be with councilmember Bridges abstaining. Mr. Kennedy, anything else you would like to uh, offer at this time?
Uh, no, um, thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. We'll, we'll be in touch to schedule a meeting uh, very shortly.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you all again.
All right, that will then bring us uh, back to item number twelve on the agenda. That's a bill introduction. I'll go ahead with the introduction of bill number eighteen eighty-four. Uh, reading of the title and, and wave reading of the bill.
Bill number eighteen eighty-four, an ordinance of the city of Boulder City, Nevada, to amend Title II, Chapter Five, Section Three of the city code by adding a new duty F, creating a mounted police unit, and renumbering F other duties to G. Bill eighteen eighty-four will be considered at the August twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty regular city council meeting.
Thank you. Item number thirteen, the Historic Preservation Committee Award.
Good evening, Mayor and members of city council.
Mr. Mays?
Yes. Michael Mays, your community development director. Annually, one of the ways that the city promotes historic preservation efforts in the community is to solicit nominations for the annual Historic Preservation Award. The nominations are considered by the Historic Preservation Committee. They make a selection, and the award is uh, presented at a subsequent city council meeting. The Historic Preservation Committee is formally requesting council consideration this year for them to be able to select two award winners. One would be in the category of residential properties, and one would be non-residential properties. And this is the committee's uh, interest in further promoting historic preservation efforts. So looking for council feedback on that.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Councilmember Folda?
Um, in reviewing the, um, this is just more of a comment than a question, sorry, Michael. Uh, the, uh, reviewing the discussion had by um, the Historic Preservation Committee, um, I see that they are trying to do um, an award for both a business or a non-resident and a residential house. Um, there was talk going back and forth about the um, SOI standards and, and how we were giving awards in the past, and how, what standards we should apply to in the future. And so, um, while I support, you know, they unanimously asked for these two awards for this year, I do support that, however, I would like them to follow more the SOI awards, uh, the standards for those awards so that, um, the houses or businesses that they're um, awarding have been doing something to um, further encourage other non-businesses or residents to, to follow those standards and to make improvements um, for historic preservation. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, I would just say, um, while it is maybe a small gesture, um, I do think that, um, kind of opening the door to, door even just a little bit more to allow, um, for other perhaps interested parties to participate in this, um, does help encourage, uh, you know, hopefully at least, uh, more people to participate. Um, there is a difference, generally speaking, in uh, the way residences are typically, historic preservation in residences versus how some, uh, non-residential or commercial areas uh, are preserved, uh, historically speaking. Um, so I do think it, that does merit there to be two different awards. Um, I do agree with, uh, councilmember Folda that I think it is important that, uh, we do really try and follow pretty strictly the SOI uh, standards, um, because it is important that when we are awarding these things that it is for, uh, real and true historic preservation, um, because that is what it, we, what we are trying to do, and by allowing this, what we are hoping to do is just to encourage more people to participate and to also increase the awareness. So, uh, I am in support of this.
Councilmember Bridges?
Um, yeah, I too, um, agree. I think that giving an award, a plaque, a certificate, does encourage both groups to take pride in ownership, whether it's a business, a lessor or owner of a building, and then also homeowners or renters. I think it, it brings them into being part of the community and saying, you know, I have something precious here and I'm going to fix it up, and, and usually, you know, they're not going to be doing it for the money. They're going to be doing it because, uh, that's what they want to do, and honoring both groups of people, I think, is, is a great idea. And I'm assuming plaques are not that expensive. And is there a cost to what these plaques are? I mean, I was talking about miniature buildings and so on, but just for a regular?
Yeah, the, the plaques are less than a hundred dollars each.
Okay, I, I think that's fair. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Um, I, I would just like to say, this is the second time around on this, and Chair Goya of the Historic Preservation Committee just can't seem to get enough of, of giving awards away. Um, I, I agree that, uh, an award program is very important. Um, I know the former chair, who had actually gotten this award going, uh, the reason for doing it, and I, I think that Mr. Goya continually misses the point about what these are all about. Um, I don't know why it is that he sees such a distinction between businesses and residents. Uh, what we should be looking at is what's in our historic district. Uh, if it's a business, that's fine, there's no penalty for that, and there's no penalty for having a residence either. There's no penalty, uh, you know, I was a member of the Preservation Committee, and we gave the city an award for Sundial Park because initially, they were just going to tear out, uh, the walkways that were there and go back with standard old concrete. Uh, after review by the Preservation Committee and recommendations, uh, they decided to go back with what had been there, the flagstone walkways. Uh, this is an ongoing award. It's not like there's some limit out there where if you don't get an award in the next five years, you'll never get an award. This award has been made each year, uh, for several years now. The reason there happens to be two plaques is because there were several plaques ordered to award each year, and apparently, the supply is down to two. Is that correct, Mr. Mays?
Yes, we have two.
Yeah, so it, it's not like, oh, well, there's just two left, so let's go ahead and do this. There was a supply that had been ordered of these plaques, and that supply has now gotten down to the level of two. That's the, all the magic there is to why there happen to be two plaques right now. Um, again, I, I also had gone back and looked at the, the minutes of this, and I know that Mr. Goya has been very insistent about this. He, he seems to really have a drive that somehow businesses have to be rewarded uh, just for being in the historic district so they can have a plaque and put it up and all of that. We do have businesses that have been awarded this, uh, particular recognition. Uh, the, the hotel is among those businesses that have been recognized in the past for it. Uh, I, I think the point that's being missed here is we're not giving, we should not be giving plaques away uh, just to reward somebody for being in the district. The purpose of these awards is to go to a property owner, whether it's a business, a residence, the city, uh, whoever that might be, who has made an effort to actually achieve preservation of the architectural features for whatever area they are in, uh, rather than just saying, you know, I, I don't care about the history of Boulder City. I'm, I'm going to do whatever I like with my property. Um, you know, that, that's taking away from the importance of a historic district. And I think that's very clear in what other entities do. Uh, these aren't participation awards, you know, second graders, everybody on the team got, got a trophy to take home. That, that's not the intent here. The intent here is to give special recognition to a property owner who has tried to adhere to the standards that have been set by the Preservation Committee. So, yeah, I don't see that there's a restriction against giving an award to a business because that's already been done. Uh, they're certainly free to put in a nomination, uh, to get one of these awards, but it should be based on, well, what did you do? Uh, do you just happen to be sitting there in the historic district? So let's give you an award for that? Again, I think that actually defeats the purpose of what this program is all about. We've addressed that before. Uh, it has been addressed by the city council before. Uh, if Mr. Goya would like to work with other organizations, you know, perhaps the Chamber of Commerce or the Rotary Club or someone might be willing to say, you know what? We'll, we'll give awards away just to businesses if he feels that it needs to be evened out or something. But I, I just think that we are totally missing the reason this program even exists. And I, I do not favor giving away two awards instead of one award and designating one for a business. Uh, it, it's an equal footing now. It, it's to encourage people to do preservation of the architectural features of the property that they own, not just simply to exist. Any other questions or comments? So I, go ahead, councilmember Adams?
Um, I just, uh, real quick, um, if we were to approve this, would this, uh, basically be requiring the Historic Preservation to offer, uh, two awards? Or, um, should there not be the, uh, support of the board that they believe that there are two equally deserving, uh, awards to be handed out? Should they say, uh, really only one, uh, meets these, these merits in these nominations? Is, do they, would they have that option if we were to move forward with this? Or is this really saying, we're going to now create two different awards, and thus those awards are expected to be given out?
The committee's request is the opportunity to present two awards. So it wouldn't require them to do that, um, but it would give them that option.
Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, um, I'm going to say something in favor of it. Uh, most of our events this year have been canceled. Is this for two thousand and twenty?
Yes.
Okay. Most of our events in Boulder City have been canceled this year. Uh, and I think it's important for, I know, I guess for me, to remember that, that we may need to do things we wouldn't do in ordinary years to get people to feel a part of the activities and what's going on in Boulder City. Yes, I agree that there need to be standards, and it's not just, gee, I have an old house, I should get one. But that there is maintenance or, or something that's been done to warrant it. But I think, I guess, in, for me right now, in, in light of other things going on in the, in terms of activities being canceled, it might be nice to have some kind of acknowledgement and, and have a Facebook Live event and something like that, so that's my thought.
Councilmember Folda?
Thank you. Uh, you know, um, two things, you know, with Councilwoman Bridges, we brought that up. Um, it, it is hard to even give out these awards because right now, the, you know, we, while we have some limited access to public, um, those other committees and commissions right now have no public. So, I mean, that is kind of a, an issue also, um, of how to award someone when we don't have public, even a lot of these meetings at this time. Um, but the other thing is, you know, um, I was in support of, of doing two awards this year. It's kind of a kickoff because I think we've been trying to get this momentum for historic preservation going, um, trying to get the standards going. You know, the report, um, the Janus Report, which is not, we need to find a name for, um, that's being redone right now, that, you know, has been delayed, I believe, because of COVID a little bit, and, and starting again, is that right, Michael? But there has been some delay to it. So obviously, we're not at the position that we would like to have been, right? That we don't have our standards in place. Um, we don't have that report to see, you know, where we lie and, um, you know, how we're doing. Um, and it sounds like some of, you know, we might even lose some designation. And so to really, um, bring it forward again was my idea, but I don't want to do it every year two awards because I think we would run out pretty fast. Um, and so, uh, you know, it's hard because you, you want this to kick off historic reservation, get it rolling, but then, yeah, we can't even hand out an award to a public right now because we can't even have a public meeting. So, you know, maybe this is something that would be better served next year when we're able to do more of these things and when we have everything in place to really push it forward.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. City Manager?
Uh, Mayor, I just wanted to mention that we have had in the past public that do come currently to this council meeting, so if there is an award presentation, much like the dance floor and ceremony and whatnot, we could, um, obviously, be able to manage, uh, bring people in and out. Uh, if, if there is a need to present any type of award.
Well, again, I, I think what Mr. Goya's intent was that he's got something of his own going on, on Facebook, was that he would make the presentation there so he'd have something to schedule for whatever he's doing on Facebook. Um, you know, I, I'll go back to what I said earlier. This is not a new award. Uh, it's, and it's not an award that was put in place during the period of time that Mr. Goya was on the committee. This is an award that goes back at least three chairs, that I'm aware of, uh, three-chair persons on the committee. Uh, it was specifically set up for recognizing a property owner or a project that tried to maintain the architectural standards that had been established for a particular area. It, it's not to recognize somebody whose business is off this year. It's not in, in, uh, it's supposed to be something for an advertising thing. Uh, if the committee wants to come up with an award for businesses in the historic district that, uh, may have absolutely nothing to do with, uh, being a historic building, um, you know, I, I, one, I would say look elsewhere, but two, if that's something the committee really feels that they need to work on, uh, then I would say that, come up with a new award. Don't transform this award into something that it was never intended for. Um, I, I think it's important, uh, that these plaques have some significance and not just be participation awards. And as far as the number of businesses versus the number of residences, there are far more residences in the historic district than there are businesses. Uh, so I guess we would give each and every business an award, and then we would do something like maybe change the plaque to say, here's your second award, as we ran through all the businesses in town. Uh, again, I, I just see this as debasing the whole purpose of what this award is for. If people want to recognize businesses, if they want to say that this is a particularly difficult time for businesses, I would absolutely support that. This particular award was established for a particular reason. This particular award was established for a particular reason, and to come along later and say, well, I just think we need to really recognize businesses, well, let's find a more appropriate way to do that.
Mayor McManus, if I can just, two points of clarification. One, to Councilwoman Folden's concern, certainly the Historic Preservation Committee also is concerned about the criteria in their selection of award winners. This month, we will be bringing the draft North Wind survey update back to the committee, and it was important for them to review that prior to their selection of award for this year. And in addition, just a point of clarification, it is the committees ask to potentially give an award to a residential and a non-residential, so that would include more than just businesses.
I know that's not what Mr. Goya said. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Hoskins?
Yes, thank you. Since it's historical, maybe we should revert back to what the historical information that you just gave us, which I did not know, and maybe we should keep it to one. I think having it at one, it means more than having it two, but that's just my thought. I like to be number one. Most of the time, I'm number 10, but anyway, I think that we should go back to, if it's historical, go back to what history has done. What have we done for years and years? Let's don't change it now. That would be my suggestion.
Well, this particular agenda item is for possible action. I'll certainly make a motion that says, I believe, well, a motion that the Historic Preservation Committee maintain the purpose of this award by awarding one award each year.
I second that motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
That's four to one then, direction to the Preservation Committee to continue the award as it was originally intended. Okay, we'll move then to item number 15. Mr. Mays?
It is me again, Mayor. So on November, excuse me, on September 24th of 2019, City Council awarded the bid for the lease of 1,345 acres to IBV Energy Partners, referenced as the Black Hills South, for a solar project. You'll see on the screen a map showing the area with an asterisk, a red asterisk, of the location of this property. The subject area is part of the El Dorado Valley Transfer Area. The map in the green shows the El Dorado Valley Transfer Area in green. It was acquired by the city in 1995 and was the subject of a ballot question before the voters in 1998, which proposed an amendment to the city charter limiting that the permitted uses in the El Dorado Valley Transfer Area be public recreational uses, the conservation easement, utilities, and solar energy facilities. This ballot question was approved by the voters in 1998. For your consideration this evening as it relates to the IBV Energy Partners project, is an amendment to the city's master plan for changing the land use designation of the property in question. And as you can see on the screen, from its current land use designation as open lands, which is shown in the yellow there, to manufacturing energy, which is shown in the green. So that would be consistent with the land use designations of the properties to the east. In addition, for your consideration this evening, is proposed rezoning of the property. It's shown in green here as geo-government open space to ER energy resource, again consistent with the zoning of the property to the east. Planning Commission recommended seven to zero to approve both the amendment to the master plan as well as the proposed rezoning of the property on June 17th, 2020. So staff is requesting that the council conduct a public hearing for the consideration of both of these items, to consider adoption of Resolution 7138, which would amend the land use designation, and consideration of Bill 1882, which would rezone the property. And just as a reminder, with the council's consideration of Bill 1882, that the council's motion should include findings as provided in your packet on page 149. And I can answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions are at this time from council, and again, I believe we should reserve our comments until following the public hearing, but any questions at this time from Mr. Mays? All right, with that then, I will open the public hearing on this matter. Again, this is a public hearing for consideration of the zoning changes. Get anyone wishing to speak on this zoning matter or change to the master plan.
Yes, I have a comment for public hearing, please. Go ahead. This is Judy DeShane, and as long as this land does not affect the dry lake bed, which is recreational, I think it would probably be just as well to go ahead and make it ER for solar energy. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in this public hearing? All right, hearing no others. I will close the public hearing then, and we will bring it back to council for any comments or additional questions. Councilmember Adams?
Yes, thank you. Just to address the question regarding the impact on the dry lake bed, I know sometimes the information displayed on the screen when it's streaming over the resolution can be poor, so sometimes that can be difficult. Would there be any impact with this on the dry lake bed?
No, and maybe for the public's benefit, if I could have the PowerPoint back up. So you can see with, and I'll go to the zoning, the property in question is changing color that is at the left end of the map. The dry lake bed is designated as government park at the right end, and it will not be impacted by this rezoning or land use designation.
I would just make a comment that, you know, I know that Commissioner, Planning Commissioner Ernie DiBiase had also brought this up. We seem to do things very piecemeal out there, and it's getting full. You know, whether it's too late to try and develop some type of comprehensive plan, I think the need is actually greater now than doing these where maybe we get approached by a company that says, I'd like to do this or that, and we go through this whole process of changing and updating things, rather than looking at the area and saying, this is what we would like to do. Because quite honestly, and again, Mr. Mays, this is no reflection on you, this has been happening for years, there's just no plan that I've ever seen for this area as far as an overall type of plan. It's just somebody comes along, wants to offer a project, and all of a sudden, we go through this whole process again without real consideration of what the whole area looks like, and now we wind up where we're at now. Any other questions or comments? All right. Again, Mr. Mays, would you state what is required for this motion? And that way, somebody can just say, so moved.
Well, Mayor, you have two actions this evening. The first is to consider Resolution 7138 as proposed, but then your second action is consideration of Bill Number 1882. And with Bill Number 1882, it directly references the findings by the City Council. There are two findings, that the proposed amendment is in general conformance with the adopted comprehensive plan, and that the proposed amendment promotes the health, safety, morals, and general welfare of the city. And just acknowledging those findings as part of your motion for the bill.
Thank you. Councilmember Bridges?
Yes, I'd like to start with make a motion to accept Resolution Number 7138.
I'll second.
Oh, I thought only the second one is based on.
Second one is findings.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Would you like then to continue, Councilmember Bridges?
Yes, sir, thank you. I would like to make a motion to accept Bill Number 1882, including 11-33-9 findings by council. Is that sufficient?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That then brings us to item number 16. Mrs. Pelletier?
Yes, I am going to take off my mask because I can't talk and wear a mask at the same time. Sorry. Okay. Okay, Agenda Item 16 is Resolution 7139, which allows for Boulder Solar III LLC to extend the time for performance from December 31st, 2020 to December 31st, 2022, to lease land from Boulder City for purposes of developing a utility-scale solar lease facility. The option area is remaining land of 764 acres of the original 2,200, and these acres for the development of a utility-scale solar energy facility approved in 2011. Two phases of the original option area have been developed, Boulder Solar Power I and Boulder Solar Power II, putting 1,436 acres under lease. BSP III has a PPA with Nevada Energy pending Public Utility Commission approval, with approval expected in December or January. BSP III has engaged the services of geotechnical firms to do a soil study and an environmental review firm to initiate the preliminary steps for any required National Environmental Protection Act studies. The fact that they are being aggressive in preparing for the development of the site for a utility-scale solar energy facility has positioned the site well for a power purchase agreement, which they have a pending one. Due to various decision timeframes by potential off-takers, with many final decisions being after January 1st, 2021, BSP III has asked that the option agreement be extended for an additional two years to December 31st, 2022. The attached agreement amendment extends the time for performance to that new date, and no other changes are proposed to the option or form of lease with this amendment. Mr. Larry Green was planning on calling in regarding this item, but I don't think he will because a family emergency has occurred. So we can answer any of your questions.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Councilmember Folden?
Just for the public to know, as far as what I was told in my briefing, is that they acted in good faith to pursue this option agreement and have been up to their payments at this time.
Yes, they have.
Okay. So it appeared to me in my briefing that they were working towards making this happen and just needed some more time on the books, but it will probably come up before this extension. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? And I know I was told by Mr. Armitra yesterday that they are doing geological work now out there. As you mentioned, there's a power purchase agreement that is being, well, scheduled for review by the Public Utilities Commission. So it does appear this is moving along. You know, it does extend the time when it will go active and the city will begin to receive additional revenue once it is active, but this doesn't appear to be the case. additional revenue once it is active, but this doesn't appear to be the case where we've seen with a couple of other projects in the past that went years with no activity. This one seems to be moving along. Any other questions or comments? All right. Entertain a motion then.
Mayor, I'll move to approve Resolution Number 7139.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That also is unanimous. Item Number 17 has been removed. We are then on to item Number 18, and Mrs. Pelletier is our presenter again.
Okay. Resolution 7141 is accepting a grant from Clark County in the amount of $1,508,373 for coronavirus relief funds. Some background on this, that in May of, in May, the state of Nevada was awarded $1.25 billion for the coronavirus relief fund. Clark County and the city of Las Vegas received direct allocations due to their populations. In June, the state of Nevada provided an allocation of funds to all local governments excluding the city of North Las Vegas, Henderson, Mesquite, and Boulder City. On July 7, the Clark County Commission approved a sub-grant award to the city of Boulder City and the other three entities also, but our amount was for $1.5 million, subject to all restrictions and limitations under the CARES Act. And the last bullet I have on the overview is a bullet that pretty much is shared by all the cities receiving these funds from the county, is per the Department of Treasury guidance, the staff will continue to work with the other three cities and the county to petition the state for the appropriate allocation of relief funds for our jurisdiction, because we didn't get per capita the same amount as all the other cities in the state. But this resolution accepts the grant from Clark County, and we have already received the money. It is in Boulder City Bank. We received the full amount. They had said they were going to withhold $300,000, and they gave us the full amount. I don't think they did that to everybody else, but because our amount was so small, I don't think they decided not to hold back any of that money. But what this does is accept that grant, and then we will come back with some proposals for how that money can be spent for the council's review and approval.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Councilmember Bridges?
Yes, thank you very much. You answered my first question, whether this was an upfront grant or whether this was reimbursement for expenses. So it's upfront grant. I'm going to make an assumption that the documentation for how it's spent at the end is quite direct in terms of guidelines and specifics.
Within the resolution?
Yes, well, yeah, within the grant itself. I know I've been involved with grants before, where there's specific paperwork questions, everything that you have to fill out, too.
Yes, the, I think I'm understanding what you're saying. The guidelines say the things we can use it for and things we can't use it for. So yes, that is spelled out.
And that it does come back to council in terms of--
Yes.
The funds, how the funds are spent?
Yes.
What's in the deadline for expenditure is December 31?
The deadline for expenditure is December 31.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. City Manager?
Yes, Mayor and Council, I just wanted to also make sure the council's aware that any funds that are not expended by December 31 will automatically revert back to the county. So in order for us to ensure that we keep all the dollars, that we want to make sure that those funds are expended to those programs, that we can clearly encumber the funds prior to the December 31 deadline.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Folda?
Thank you. I just want to reiterate some of the information that we received as well, for the public to know, that these are restricted funds. There's only certain things that can be used, and to reiterate what our city manager was saying, that, you know, we have this 1.5 that has to be used before December 31, or it goes back to the county. I also just want to acknowledge all the work that our finance director and our financial group has been doing. This isn't just being given to us like it sounds like. We actually had to really work for this money, and it's very small compared to what's been given to the county and the state. And so I just want to acknowledge that and appreciate what you've been doing to fight for the money that's for Boulder City and that we can use that. So, thank you. Thank you.
Councilmember Adams?
Just for the public's information, so when we, when you say that we were not adequately compensated compared to the rest of the state of Nevada, or at least us minus the other three cities, how much do we feel that we are owed compared to how much we are getting right now?
Well, my information that we've put together on this and that we were using when we were trying to evaluate what we should get, is what we determined was the cities, all the entities in the state that received monies from the state, received on a per capita of about $182 per capita. And we figure out what we are getting, it is $93 per capita. So it's about half. So we feel we should be entitled to another 1.5 million. So that's what we want to leave that door open so that we can continue to pursue that.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of just where we were at. Of course, very grateful I'm not going to, you know, stick my nose up at this or anything, but I just want to make sure that the residents of Boulder City are aware of where we are at in the process, because it isn't over yet. So, thank you.
Any others? I would just like to follow up on that, too, because, again, this has been a real saga about this money. This is the CARES Act, so if anyone is not familiar with it, Congress passed this several months ago. I believe that it was passed out of both houses of Congress unanimously. Since then, Congress has been having some issues getting things done, but this was passed out unanimously, and there are several restrictions on how this money can be spent. Those are not restrictions from the state or the county. Those are restrictions that the United States Congress put on this money. Now, there was other money in that act. For instance, we've received money for our municipal airport. Actually, more money than this. I believe it was $2.7 million we received for the municipal airport. So there are a number of things within that CARES Act that this money came out with. And when you mentioned the per capita of, I believe you said it was $182, when the state of Nevada made their distribution to all except Clark County, everybody else got $182 per capita. So every other county or city received that amount of money. And again, there are cities, for instance, a lot of people don't realize that Nye County has no cities in Nye County. So Tonopah and Perrump are not municipalities. Nye County is its own, so that money would have gone directly to Nye County.
But--
Please, please let me finish with this. Within Clark County, because there were two entities that were over 500,000 population, they each received specific distributions from the federal treasury, and that's the city of Las Vegas and Clark County. And when you look at the numbers and you subtract out the populations of Mesquite, North Las Vegas, Henderson, and Boulder City, from the money that Clark County received and the remaining population within Clark County, that's where that $182 still comes up. So when the county decided to finally disperse money out to Mesquite, North Las Vegas, Henderson, and Boulder City, that's where the difference came in, is that distribution was less than the $182 that went to every other county or municipality in the state of Nevada. And then the city of Las Vegas received their own allotment because they have a population over 500,000 that was not involved with the Clark County distribution or the state of Nevada distribution, and also came out to the $182.
But to add to what you're saying, Henderson, Mesquite, and North Las Vegas did not get $182 per capita either?
Correct. We, I believe that all of the other entities, all the other municipalities in Clark County received the same $92 or--
No. No, Mesquite got more. And I, and I don't know why, but I have a guess that maybe because they can't, and this is a guess, they may not be able to utilize the county services to the extent that the other three can. So they received a larger allotment than the other three, Boulder City, Henderson, and North Las Vegas.
Okay, so again, we don't really know why the math worked out the way it did.
Right.
Okay. So that, again, I think, you know, when we bring, as stated in your backup material, that we're looking to the state of Nevada, well, the state of Nevada already gave out what every other entity per capita in the country was designated under the CARES Act. And again, the CARES Act was done rapidly due to circumstances, so there's not much in the CARES Act that really specifies what happens when a larger entity gets a distribution that is based on smaller entities within that.
Right.
Okay. Again, and I do appreciate that update on it. The other thing that I think we all need to be aware of is apparently with this, there were some recommendations from the county of programs that should be established, such as the grant program for businesses to assist in paying for personal protection equipment.
They offered to run some of these grant programs to small businesses for us for a fee, and we opted to handle these programs on our own, which everybody else did, too.
Okay, and then also a program for providing facilities or some type of an arrangement for the distance learning that children are expected to do. Both North Las Vegas and Henderson have already established both those programs, the grant program, and trying to find some facilities to help with the distance learning program that might help kids that need internet connections, things like that. We've not established anything at this time, right?
No, but there is Agenda Item Number 20. Is that where you'll be discussing that this evening, I believe?
Right.
So--
But I'm just saying, that's what other entities have already established those programs. They've advertised the programs. They've already rolled that out. So far, we've not rolled anything out.
We just received the money last week, and the other, the other part of this is the money has to be spent by December 31, so not to cause panic spending. We have told the county that the public safety aspect of the expenses that Boulder City will incur will more than cover this amount of money. So therefore, we won't be in a rush to just spend money. We can use that cost to justify keeping the money and not returning it to the county, but between now and the end of the year, if we decide we want to fund programs that fall under the CARES Act, we can do that, and then at the end of the year, do a budget augmentation and reallocate some of the funding from these monies to take care of that and eat the cost on the public safety side. So it just gives us more flexibility.
Well--
I know we're getting into the weeds of accounting, but--
Well, and I appreciate that, though, because when we're talking about 1.5 million dollars and the fact that, oh, there's a deadline of December 31, I think it's important that the council and the public understand, we've already had those expenses.
Yep.
So whatever we might come up with later, and people are going to say, "Well, you got that 1.5 million, you can pay for this program, you can pay for that program." In actuality, we've already encountered those costs. So we have zero of this money. So anything that we do in the future, between now and December 31, isn't going to be CARES Act money, it's going to be general fund money.
Yes, I guess you could look at it that way.
Well--
It's 1.5--
You know, if I write a check to somebody, and they go, you know, and say, "Yep, okay, thank you," and then somebody else comes and says, "Hey, you got paid last Friday. Why don't you, you know, write me a check for that?" And you say, "Oh, I just, you know, I just wrote a check for something." You go, "Yeah, but you got paid. Go ahead and write me a check."
Right. But there is money in the budget for the, for the public safety salaries. So it's not like it's an unbudgeted, whereas item number 20 is unbudgeted. So if there are unbudgeted things we do, then we just eat the cost that we will have used the services to provide COVID relief. So yes, you can't spend the same dollar twice. You are correct.
Well, it sounds like we're sure making an effort to that. But, but I think more importantly is we're missing the point that somehow this is 1.5 million sitting there waiting to be spent on things, when in fact, because of this pandemic, we've already incurred those costs. Is that correct?
We've incurred, we've incurred costs that qualify to keep this money, is what I'm saying.
Equal to how much?
It will be by December 31, it's 1.5 million.
Okay.
Well--
So again, I just think that's important for the council to understand and the public. You know, certainly, Congress has been, I mean, they've, they've pushed out trillions of dollars, and, you know, sometimes people hear, "Oh, it's not being spent." We already spent the money. We already incurred the cost. So whatever we do from this point forward, that's not part of this CARES Act, really, because that's already been encountered as a cost. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Well, I'm going to offer a motion on this with an amendment to the resolution portion of it, that rather than authorizing the city manager designate or recommend uses of it, that we actually require a plan be presented here by our September 8 meeting, 2020. So 30 days or a month to get a detailed plan together showing what costs we've already incurred, and I know there's a weekly report that's prepared showing us what the personnel costs and all of that are, but any other programs. Because what I'm concerned with is we'll get into a situation of, we're saying, "Oh, well, we've got this money, why don't we do that?" And then, "We've got this money, why don't we do this thing over there?" No, I really think it's important that we get a plan together. Certainly, we can't see into the future. I get that. If nothing else has been learned from this pandemic, we have to understand that we cannot see into the future very well. But what I will do then is offer a motion to approve Resolution 7141 with the amended language. Now, therefore, be it resolved that City Council accept the 1.500,000, $508,373 award from Clark County to recuperate city costs relating to COVID-19, and request the city manager and staff provide recommendations and a plan for the use of the funds for qualifying expenses under the CARES Act. Such recommendations and detailed plan be provided no later than the City Council meeting scheduled for September 8, 2020. If that plan, and that's the end of my resolution there. I would certainly consider a special meeting if need be on this, but that's the end of my resolution. Is there anyone who can second that?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Mrs. Pelletier. I appreciate the information. If, if we can ever figure out what's going on with all of these different programs, I'm sure we're going to be in much better shape. So I do appreciate that. Okay, that will then bring us to item number 19.
Are you tired of me yet?
Not yet.
Okay, this is my last item, I think. Okay, Agenda Item 19, Resolution 7139 authorizes the appraisal of land located adjacent to 936, and I don't know if I pronounced this right, Villa Grande way?
Not bad for someone from Massachusetts.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. This next name, too. I don't know if I'm saying this one right, but Ms. Laurie Abic recently purchased the home located at this address. She was recently informed by city staff that the existing fence line and improvements-- She was recently informed by city staff that the existing fence line and improvements were located beyond her property line and upon city property. This discovery came about when Ms. Abic applied for a swimming pool building permit. It was also at this time that the property owner discovered that the encroachment, which is that, that wall, lay within a dedicated transmission line easement for a Southern California Edison Transmission Line. Ms. Abic would like to keep the improvements as presently constructed. To do this, in addition to acquiring the 450-foot square parcel, uh, 450-square-foot parcel from Boulder City, Ms. Abic will also need to obtain approval from Southern California Edison for the encroachment, which is the wall, and improvements within the easement. The land sale is not needed for the construction of her pool. So all this came up because she went for the permit to build a pool and found out that the wall on her, on the land she bought was actually located outside her, her land area. The Southern California Edison Transmission Line easement is referenced as a right-of-way by the Bureau of Land Management who granted the easement right to Southern Cal, California Edison for the transmission line. It is an important distinction to note that the term right-of-way, as used by the BLM, is meant to be an easement and not a property conveyance. Should the 450 square feet of property be sold to Ms. Abic, the Southern California Edison Transmission easement would remain in place and the homeowner would be subject to their conditions for whatever may be constructed within the easement. The city does not enforce the conditions of the easement. That is a private matter between the landowner and the easement holder. Also, I want to note that the, the Department Recommendation section in the staff report contains an error describing the, the site as being near the airport. This sentence should not be part of this report. This does not affect the validity, the validity of the request, as the title on the agenda, the overall discussion of the site, within the staff report, the supplied map, and the resolution all reference the correct location of the site, of the site to be appraised. And Ms. Abic said she may be calling in regarding this item, so we can answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Councilmember Hoskins?
Yes, I'd like to make a comment. Usually, the title company checks the boundary lines when a property is purchased. The owner may want to check with the title company they used when they bought the property. It may not be in the best interest of the owner to proceed with, with an appraisal at this time. Understand what I'm saying?
That she should... Okay, that might be her calling.
Any other questions or comments? Do we have a call? Dropped.
The one comment I think I want to make on that, I, I was wondering the same thing, and I think when people buy land that abuts to the desert, they don't always get a, an appra, not appraisal, but a, the lot lines checked. I could be wrong on that, but...
Well, I know in other states, I've been a Realtor before, many moons ago, but anyway, part of the title company's responsibility is to, to check the boundary lines.
Yes, and I don't think that...
And if they're wrong, then she has some course of action.
Do you want to comment on that, or?
Yeah, again, I, I, you know, I appreciate the, the comment, but I, any other questions or comments?
Yep.
Councilmember Bridges?
Thank you. I'm just in terms of the cost factor, it was mentioned in our briefing that the two costs would be about the same most likely between removing the wall and having to move the property and rebuilding, what I assume is probably a cinder block wall with footings and concrete, and/or the two appraisals, and then purchasing the land.
We, we estimate that, but we don't know that for sure.
You don't know for sure.
Okay. Hey, do you want to see if it's the person who's requesting this?
Hi, this is, yes, this is Laurie. I'm, I'm the property owner.
Thank you. We'll, we'll see if there are any questions for you. I do appreciate you calling in on this. I, I would just like to comment that, you know, we, we've had situations before, especially where there's open land behind a property, where people have built out into it, you know, it seems like forever ago now, but I believe it was only four, five, six months ago, we had another situation. What I see different here is the city entered into an agreement with a utility to grant a right-of-way. And I, I've heard the explanation that you gave earlier about that. But I believe that makes this a very different situation where somebody may have gone, you know, a little bit further out into open land, rather than in this case where it's gone out into an easement that the city had agreed with many years ago about this. And also during my briefing yesterday, I had asked, you know, was this permitted work? In other words, was it built according to the laws of the city? Apparently, there was a permit that had been applied for. There was one initial inspection done, and then nothing happened as far as the permit was concerned. And yet, there's the wall. So we're, we're just left to, in the dark, as far as why the wall became a reality, but the permit was never completed.
The, the easement was granted by the Bureau of Land Management. I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, can I, can I interject?
Not at this moment, ma'am. We'll give you just a, if you'd let me finish here, I, I will get with you in just a moment. Again, I, I think that we have a different situation here than what we might see if this was just open land behind us. But it is in an agreement that the city had already entered into with a different entity. I don't believe the city has the ability to go to that entity now and say, we're going to make a change in this agreement by selling this land. And I get, you know, the, the response is that, oh, well, we're not changing the agreement. We are changing the agreement by selling the land, because before it was the city owns that land. And now the city's going to say, well, we're going to sell the land to someone else, and the easement will follow that transaction. I, I'm not comfortable getting into situations like that. Any other questions or comments from council? Okay, Ms. Abic, if you would like to make a comment, or...
Yes, actually, I would. I have actually been in contact with Southern California Edison. I spoke to a young lady that is in charge of easement properties and whatnot for the, the Edison Company through the State of Nevada. And she has gone and done her due diligence on her end and has given me more or less the approval from them to allow that block wall to remain, as long as the city of Boulder would allow me to purchase that, and the proper legwork and paperwork was completed, followed up, and put into parcel and legalized, and all the other terms that are taking place as far as making things done according to what's needed on both parties involved.
Okay, any members of council have questions for Mrs. Abic? Member Hoskins?
Yes, I was just wondering, did you get that in writing?
I do.
Any other questions? All right, again, Ms., Ms...
I have all of the information from the, the young lady at Edison that I did my legwork with. I can, you know, send that into Brock or Michael, whoever I need to send it into to show that that due diligence was done as well. It's, you know, it's a total of 450 square feet. It's two feet past the actual property parcel line.
Hey, any other questions by council members for Mrs. Abic? Ms. Abic, did you have any other information?
Um, I can just supply you everything I have, basically stating that Edison is willing to allow it to remain, the block wall to remain, and as long as Boulder City is willing to sell me the property and take care of the legality behind it, it's, it's fine on their end.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments from council? Okay, I, I think it's important for us to realize that the action that we're being asked to look at tonight is whether to authorize an appraisal for this land. That's all we're being asked for at this time. However, the appraisal, we do require two appraisals to be done. That would be done at the homeowner's cost. So if later the decision is not to sell the land, that's just money that the homeowner is going to incur for this. So I think that's important to recognize, that's the action before us.
Correct.
Ms., Ms. Abic, at this point, the, the discussion now is among the council members, but I do appreciate your input on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments from council? Anyone wishing to make a motion then on Resolution 7142? Councilmember Bridges?
Yes, I move to accept Resolution number 7142.
Anyone wishing to second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? I vote nay. I, I'm not sure, I didn't hear the other vote, so I guess it's, it would be 41 then. All right. So the motion carries. We then move on to item number 20. Mr. Hall?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Roger Hall, Parks and Rec Director for the great city of Boulder City. The Clark County School District Board of Trustees has approved a distance learning program, reopening plan for all schools in Boulder City, starting on August 21st. That's two weeks away. Item number 20 on the agenda is a staff directive regarding the possible approval of an all-day childcare supervision program in response to this program. Councilman Folded asked the city manager if the city had the ability to, to provide or offer an all-day safety, safety program, five days a week during the school year for elementary school children. And with this in mind, the Parks and Rec Department staff was asked to put together a childcare program to accommodate children during this time. This new program is a program expansion of the council-approved morning and afternoon safety program that we currently operate during the normal school year. And if approved by city council, the program will be scheduled five days a week, 11 hours a day, 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, located at ABC Park. We're having a hard time finding staff to work, however, and during the summer, we usually use college kids or high school kids, and many of these students are going back to school. So we started a recruitment in anticipation of bringing it to city council on July 9th, 2020, to see who might be available, you know, to work this program. And as of today, there are eight applicants for the aid position, and two are 18 years and older. So the majority of them are the younger group. We have one application for a leader position, and right now, with the, with the amount of staff that we have, we, we would be able to accommodate 10 children with the staff. The estimated daily fee would be 20 bucks a child, and all the other entities in Las Vegas will be charging 20, $20 per day, per child. The ABC Park Gymnasium Classroom and Youth Center could accommodate this program at ABC Park. The children enrolled in the program would be split up into two groups of 17 children each, with an average of three leaders per group. And since this program can only accommodate approximately 34 children if properly staffed, a survey of city employees was done around July 23rd to find out how many city employees would actively use the program. And there was really limited, three poss, limited possible requests for service from city employees. We also did a survey of our existing summer program with the parents at ABC Park, and a total of five people that said they might be interested in this program if approved by the, the city council. The Clark County School District Learning Program creates a variety of issues for us. The program would require upgrade of the Wi-Fi bandwidth at our facilities to accommodate the distance learning section, and staff has a big concern regarding the school districts and parents' expectation that our staff would be responsible to facilitate the distant learning process with the children during this time. 34 children have 34 different schedules, and it would be quite the, the task to keep everything straight while the kids are trying to learn in school. You know, our staff is great, however, we are, they are not academic educators and may not have the training or experience to facilitate the, this, this portion of the program. Under financial, using the 34-student total capacity as a baseline, weekly revenue is estimated at approximately $3,400 a week, which is $146,200 for a 43-week program. Expenditures are estimated at $276,487, which is a, shows a deficit of $130,287. Some of the expenses associated with this program may be reimbursed through the CARES money we receive from the county. And in closing, staff is looking for a staff directive from city council regarding the establishment of, of this proposed program, and I would be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Councilmember Folded?
Thank you, Mayor, yes. So a little bit background on this. Back in June, city manager Naliola and I participated in a CCSD and municipalities reopening plan for school. During that time, it was still the plan to have two days in-person and three days virtual. And so in preparation, in preparing for that meeting, I did ask the city manager, you know, what's our capacity, you know, because we are, at the time, we're running a summer program that was very similar, and to get just some knowledge on that before that meeting. Since then, a lot of, lots of things have changed. For CCSD, they have gone to full-time online, online learning, and so students will be online, well, four days a week. Wednesday is still kind of a, I don't know what you would call it. It's not a, it's a, like a office hours kind of a day, where they could do online resources, but it won't be live. What else? Some of the charter schools have now, due to legislation, have now changed their in-person plan to also online learning. And so unless they're in a private school, it's about every student in the Valley right now will be online. I had asked the city manager if, for an update on that legislation, do you know if you had researched that?
So recently, as council might be aware, that the legislative, legislation, legislature met, and they did pass a bill in which limits liability of public organizations in terms of lawsuits, potential lawsuits, as it relates to individuals claiming that because of employment or, you know, exposure to city facilities, city programs and whatnot, if they contract the virus. So that limits our exposure significantly, so long as we are following the mandates of the governor and other agencies such as CDCs and the Health District. You know, fortunately, this council was wise to continue to follow those mandates as they were coming down, so it would minimize our exposure.
So while that protected municipalities, it excluded school districts. And so that's why a lot of the charter schools have now pulled out of, not because of the liability, they were removed from any protection. So those are just something to consider in this. Today, I was notified of a plan that North Las Vegas is doing. They have a three-part plan, which I asked, they just got it today, so I asked Roger and...
I did find out some information. I can explain it.
Okay, if you'd like to explain. But basically, there's three options where they have CCSD assistance for those children, grades K or 1 through 6. There's an actual micro school that they're running, and then they're also doing basically like a safe key version of what they're doing. They're also providing a co-op place for homeschool students. They're giving them a location to use for co-ops, because the, the major part, problem with co-ops is finding a local... co-ops is finding a location. I think this would help a lot of our issues of, and help protect our vulnerable by providing employees that would actually have a background checked on, they would have a safe location to meet, and it's not just, and we would also comply with daycare and tutoring issues that might come up with extra kids in homes at this time, so, sorry, go ahead.
No, thank you. So basically, the city Henderson, Las Vegas, Clark County, and North Las Vegas are offering full-day safety recreation programs for the residents at 20 bucks a day, and these are similar to the recreation programs that we're talking about tonight. All four entities have developed programs providing all-day childcare supervision from like 7 o'clock in the morning till 6 o'clock at night. The city of Las, of North Las Vegas has also entered into a partnership with the Southern Nevada Urban Micro Academy to provide students, grades 1 through 8, live classroom instruction from a teacher blended with online lessons, and this is an additional program offered by the city of Las Vegas. And from what I understand, the city of North Las Vegas would provide the facility for the academy to use. They would also provide the increased Wi-Fi bandwidth for their facility so the kids could use the, the Chromebooks, tablets, or computers. And students who enroll in this academy program would need to un-enroll from the Clark County School District to be eligible for this academy program. And the curriculum would be similar to the CCSD but more rigorous, and the cost per student is $2 per day, and there's a cap of 18 students per teacher. And the reason why it's so cheap is they're going to be using the CARES money to, to go ahead, and when, when you un-enroll with the school district, you don't get a tablet from the school district, so the city of North Las Vegas would be providing tablets, computers to all kids in this program, as they wouldn't receive one as they're un-enrolled from Clark County. And the Southern Nevada Urban Micro Academy will offer another program using CCSD curriculum, supported in-person by, by staff and teachers, along with enrichment and extracurricular activities for 20 bucks a day. So they're offering basically, you know, like she said, three, three programs. And North Las Vegas has agreed to supplement these programs with CARES money, and, you know, we called twice today to get additional information on how the contracts and how this works, and, and as of this afternoon, we have not received a call back, but we'll continue to look and see what the requirements would be for this type of program if we'd like to see that in Boulder City. So that's basically what, what the city of North Las Vegas is doing.
Okay. And I, I just want to say, you know, this might not be the answer for Boulder City, but there's, you know, and we're, things are rapidly changing that we have to consider. And, and there's not been, you know, in the, I asked for how many employees responded for needing help, and there was two or three, and how many current children in this program wouldn't, wouldn't want it, and there's five. So it's not like hundreds of kids are going to be pouring in, but I think that, sorry, sorry, I didn't, I didn't get emotional. But you are all aware, I have five kids, and it's a stressful time for kids. And, and what we can do as a city to help families that are struggling right now and provide some answers to questions they have been having for months now. I think if we could, you know, reach out and see what other options are out there, that we can investigate those and help anyone that we could. Something that hasn't been considered, I know we've had a problem with getting staffing, but I've seen several people posting on Facebook that they could tutor, and if we could grab some of those tutors and bring them into our program and, and, you know, work together and really make a co-op, there's just other things out there that I think that we could do and explore, and I would just like to implore this council to support that.
Councilmember Bridges?
Oh boy, now I'm going to crack. Thank you, Councilwoman Folda. I'm, I've been involved, I was going to talk about this in my report, but I'm going to make it very brief. I've been meeting every week, Regional Approach to Education Support, Southern Nevada Pre-K through 12 Plan for Educational Support, and I think it's interesting because it seems like, while we've been chatting, that each of the individual entities have been coming up with their own solutions. They were, the issue is identifying large-capacity locations for vulnerable populations, continued discussion, well, Clark County School District said, no, you can't come into our buildings, searchable database of private nonprofit daycare centers. Part of the problem has been finding homes, licensed facilities to accommodate any number of children, and the problem is there's a backlog right now of licensing in, in Clark County because it's all done through Metro. They have a backlog of about 3,000. And the problem is Wi-Fi needs assessment of Southern Nevada. Now, I've shared with this committee a little bit of what we've been talking about, and what I, what it's interesting to see is that's what everybody's talking about, is finding a solution on a local level. I am currently teaching a kindergartner for 10 weeks, maybe the whole semester. My daughter's daughter, who is living with us, and it is a time-intensive, probably two-time-intensive process. But my feeling is eight kids, 12 kids, if they can get through their year of schooling or their semester of schooling by our actions, I am absolutely for it. I, I know when I talked to you the other day, Roger, that you didn't have the kind of feedback, you know, people say, well, if there's 1,800 kids, well, you know, hundreds. No, because I think while the areas, municipalities are coming up with their own solutions, families have been planning all summer on how to find solutions to their issues, whether they put the kids in private schools or gone to homeschool. There are vulnerable populations out there, and there are vulnerable populations here in Boulder City, and there's somebody, people out there pulling their hair, not knowing what they're going to do with their second grader and their fifth grader while they have to go to work. And I'll finish with one of the lines from this document I'm looking at, says, "We recognize that investing in childcare at this critical time is a valuable economic development strategy intended to support the entire Clark County region as we continue to adapt and recover from the COVID-19 pandemic." I, I don't feel personally that we should make this decision based on we're going to have $130,000 deficit. First of all, I don't think we're going to get that many kids, because I think a lot of people have already come up with their own solutions. But I feel very strongly that this is something we should put together so that those people who are in that position have a solution. That's it. Thanks.
Councilmember Adams?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I will come at this a little bit different, and I certainly, it's not my intention to be callous. I'm not a parent, and I am not even going to try and pretend that I understand the stress that so many families are under, so I am trying to be very understanding of, of those concerns. You know, there is a reason why schools are shut down, you know, and that is that, you know, to this day, you know, COVID-19 continues to rise throughout our communities, and the reason why they are going through long-distance learning is, is not because it is the best learning practice for, for our students. It's, it's not. I have many teachers in my family, they don't believe that this is the best way for, for students to learn. However, we do need to try and mitigate the, the spread of this virus. So you see across the country with schools that are opening, you are seeing so many of those kids, you know, they're having to go into quarantine, they're having to close down, so, you know, this does seem a little counter to that. That being said, say we can do this in a safe manner, and I know it's been said that, you know, we'll likely not be having hundreds and hundreds of students, but let's say we get to the point where we do have a few more, a handful more of students wanting to apply to this program that we simply can't accommodate. How do we, how would we go about making that determination? It'd be something that would be of interest to me, as to who could be admitted to it and who, who could not be. And then, the other thing is, you know, I certainly take note that those who likely need this program the most are also likely those who can least afford it. That's just a matter of, of the fact, so it's also something that we need to be cognizant of. You know, I, I, I understand that, that times are really tough and families are really trying to figure out what to do, so I agree that we, as a city, that's why we are here, is to provide services and to make sure that, that families are taken care of. So I do have my concerns, and I'm hesitant with this type of program, however, that doesn't mean that I'm, I'm not saying right off the bat that, that I'm not, I can't support something like it, but I do have some of those concerns with how we make sure we address those things so that if we are to move forward, that it is a, a successful program that does help encourage best practices and not, you know, just a small, you know, Band-Aid on, on a flood that's, that's coming. So I, I just want to make sure that we are expending our resources in the best way to really help families manage a situation, so I'm, I'm happy to hear any other input on that.
Thank you. I, I would just like to say, you know, trying to do something about this problem, and it certainly is a problem, you know, it's a problem for the children, it's a problem for the parents, it's a problem for the city. What can we do about this? And I think Councilman Adams brought up an excellent point. You know, one of the solutions to taking care of children, and by the way, Mr. Hall, I wanted to confirm that we have a safe key program, is that right? The city of Boulder City has a safe key program?
Well, right now, we're doing a summer safety program, which is basically the 11 hours per day, like we were proposing for...
And the city's done that for how long now?
Oh, it's been, well, 40 years that I know of.
Okay, so it's not something that we have no experience with, we do it all the time.
Yes, we do.
I mean, I can remember being a kid, I don't remember what they called it, but the gyms were...
Safe key.
No, no, I'm sure it was not called...
It was summer parks, is what we called it.
Uh, no, I, I'm a little older than that, Roger. I think it was something else. But, you know, the gyms were open. You know, you went in there, you, you could play pool, ping pong, whatever, something for the kids to do during the day during the summertime. So that's not an unusual thing for Boulder City. And we've never broken even on these programs, is that right? They're always subsidized by the general fund?
Yes, they're, the summer parks program is subsidized by the general fund, however, we do break even on the, the morning and afternoon program that we do for safety during the school year.
Okay.
So...
You know, the, the prob, the real problem that I see here is, whatever we would try and do would mean getting a lot of children together in one place. We're going to be hard-pressed to find places. We do have the gym at ABC Park, we have two gyms right next door here. Is that correct?
Yeah, we, we looked at all the facilities down there, and the best place to do this type of program is ABC Park because you can segregate...
But we do have two gymnasiums right next door here.
Yes, we do.
Okay. So there are some possibilities. You know, my concern is, just as, as Councilmember Adams said, if we start getting together enough children, people are going to get sick. We're seeing that all over the country, that as schools begin to open up, people get sick. And so that, that's an issue. I'm not even talking about liability, I'm talking about the fact that people get sick, and it causes a greater spread of the disease. So that, that's a concern for me, is what do we do about that? Not liability-wise, the fact that people get sick is my concern about how do we get a program where we can take care of a number of children and, and not make this disease worse than it already is? So that, that's one issue. I do know that the Clark County School District, they are making computers available to children. There's talk, at least, if people do not have internet access, that they may be able to provide something, but I don't think that's been firmed up yet because they really haven't been able to get a handle on the cost yet. You know, the taxpayers invest a great deal of money into our public schools, and yet the school district is saying those facilities are off-limits, you cannot use them. So we've invested, who knows how many billions of dollars into these facilities that we can't use, that have internet access, that have all these other things. So as a community, we're saying, well, okay, we, we do have three gymnasiums. Well, that means bringing a lot of children into a closed space, and that, that's pretty much a recipe for how this virus spreads. So I, I'm not sure what the solution is. I'm not sure what we can do to be able to make something available to the community in a way that would be effective. 10 children or 34 children, you know, I, I just don't know if that's an effective number, to be honest with you. It's better than zero, I'll grant you that. So I, I would say, you know, I would like to hear from the community as far as what they believe we might be able to do. You know, keeping kids outdoors, at least that helps reduce the spread of the disease, but it also gives children a lot of other things to think about rather than what reason they may be there. So I, I wish I had a solution. There are problems that do not have easy solutions. There are problems that we can't throw enough money at to fix, and we may not have enough money to start throwing at it in the first place. So I would like to hear comments from the community. I would encourage all of our residents, you know, contact one, any member of the council and, and let them know what you think might be possible to do in this. At this time, other than the school district saying, we'll help you with a computer, we may be able to help you with internet access, you know, they are continuing on with their free breakfast and lunch programs, I think that's an outstanding thing. I, I hope that the residents of Boulder City are utilizing that program. I, I'm not real sure where we're going to go with something like this. I, I wish I did, I wish I had an answer, because it's critical, and I, I do get, there are many parents, they need to go to work. If they don't go to work, they don't earn any money. And how, how does that happen then? When normally they would be able to bring their children to school in the morning, and they would pick them up in the afternoon, and everything would work out? You know, nobody planned on a worldwide pandemic right now, but I, I would love to hear from other folks to see what we might be able to do without making the problem worse by getting a lot of children together and, you know, have the unfortunate situation of them becoming sick. So I, I, I will leave it up to others to, if they want to give any direction on this, I, I believe our particular agenda item for this is possible staff directive. Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to see, I understa, I, my personal opinion is we're not even going to get to that 34. I think there's enough fear out there and people's concerns, and that people have already made arrangements with, with family, with other things, almost like a drawing, you know? How many spaces? There's three rooms available at ABC Park with the possibility of maybe a gym. I'm also assuming that these kids, because they're school-aged, these are not three-and-four-year-olds, are going to need a place to sit with their computer. And how does that work? Do you have six kids in a space so that they're six feet apart, so that they're wearing masks, that there's a teacher? I'd almost like to see a drawing of, of what this looks like, because I don't think this looks like to me 34 kids running around in a gym, or even so...
No, the, the children would be split into two groups, okay? Be 17 kids in each group with three leaders. There'll be three shifts of people because we have, we're kind of, we have to use 20, 20-hour-week people, so you can only use them X amount, so I have to have three shifts a day from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. And so you have three shifts. The kids would stay together in that group. We try to keep them segregated from the other group. We have the youth center, we have the gymnasium, and we have the other classroom at the gym that they can use. We also have plans to have our sports people do a little clinic-type of things. We have the art center right there that we can do some art, art programs, but the trick is to keep the kids in their groups separated from each other during the day.
Yeah, is there space within...
That's right.
It would... Yeah. Is there space within, with 34 children, is there space in all that space to keep them separate?
That would be the max though for ABC Park because of the, the space requirements. Now however, it'd be nice to get the, maybe the library onboard because they have Wi-Fi capabilities, they have computers, and I, you know, that might be a good way to, and that's another program, you can keep them split up, um, in, in that park. So there's a lot of, um, ABC would be the best. We looked at the rec center, we looked at the Smith Center, we looked at, uh, but ABC Park with, with the facilities we have down there is the best place for this type of thing if we're gonna do it.
Have you received any feedback from the library?
Well, they weren't too, um, too happy about opening up there because they thought they would have to open up the other, the facility to other groups who would want to use it and worried about their staff. And, you know, it's a typical COVID, um, um, response, basically.
But how are, okay, so you're still gonna do safe key during the year, correct?
Well, we were, if this, if this doesn't pass, we were thinking, how can we, uh, at least the, the parents are gonna go nuts watching the kids all day if they're at home with the kids. And so to give them an outlet, basically, we were thinking about having the program, since school is not in operation and we can't do the morning and afternoon, we would have a three-hour, uh, program from like three to six at ABC Park, basically, as an outlet and have the kids do crafts and games and, and just to get them out of the house for three hours for the parents at a reduced rate. And that was our, a plan B if this, uh, the main program doesn't, uh, doesn't pass and be approved by city council.
Yeah, I'd like to see what, sort of visually, what that looks like with the 34.
Well, I have a drawing here and I'd be happy to show it to you. Uh, because I'm a visual person too, and I did, I did make a, uh, a vision. Here we go, with the groups and all, I'll show this to you after.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, yes, I see that, um, a situation here where you might not be able to get the amount of employees that you need in order to take care of the children that we may have.
Well, right now, we could do 10 children. Um, that's the max we can do with the staff that we have right now. And obviously, if we get more staff, we could open it up until we get to 34, which would be our max for ABC Park.
So maybe you should go out and, and, uh, talk to the citizens and see what the need is. And maybe some of these people would decide, some of the mothers that, the children are older, would decide to come and, and help out.
Well, we did, uh, approach the, um, the police department. You know, the crossing guards are not working right now because schools out of, and out of their, I think there were 16 crossing guards. I think four were interested in possibly helping out with the program. So that will help out. And so we're just trying to put this thing together and see what we can, what we can do.
I would also look up at the churches, because a lot of times, you know, they have different classes where they, uh, Bible school or whatever they call it now, that they, there might be people who would be interested there that would do it.
Yeah, I know the Lutheran church in town right now is having a co-op for some of the kids, and, uh, they're doing that. And again, the, the registration is not as, um, you know, I anticipate a lot of people looking for this type of program, but we're not seeing that. Because right now, you know, during the summer, people have made arrangements with older siblings, with, um, grandma, with, uh, aunts, uncles to watch their kids. And we're not seeing the big, um, you know, clamoring effect that we would see normally.
Well, I wouldn't want to see to close the door right now. I think we should look a little bit further and see what we can do.
Well, we have two weeks, um, until school starts, the 24th. Don't have much time.
Actually, it looks like we have an extended period of time here. Uh, I, I doubt that the pandemic's gonna go away. So I, I understand the, the school, uh, time, but, uh, I, I think we need to think outside that box myself.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just want to address some of the, the concerns that you had about COVID. I just want you to understand that these activities with these kids gathering has not stopped. Um, that the staff has been doing temperature checks and PPEs. And, um, you know, we had a suspected case and that was dealt with, um, very quickly. Um, and so there is some experience here with running these. Um, so I do understand your concern and I'm not gonna, um, you know, that's something that I'd consider, you know, that parents need to be aware if they're using the system. I think that if someone got it, they would, you know, that it could be canceled for a couple of weeks while everyone, um, isolates. And so, um, but I just want to acknowledge that, that these activities haven't stopped. You know, we've been still having sport camps. Um, we're starting a soccer camp pretty soon here. Um, so the gathering of kids has not stopped and we've been working through that. Um, but what I hear from council, it seems to be is that, uh, we'd like a little more information, that there's some things that maybe other agencies are doing. And if there's anything council can do to reach out to, um, other vested interests, um, you know, the schools, you know, I'm willing to talk to them to see what interest they have. I really don't see, you know, the middle school and high school needing something like this. It's really our middle school children, or, sorry, elementary school children, um, that I have a concern for, you know? And especially everyone being online and having online safety, um, that's a concern for me being, you know, left alone with, or with older siblings who are trying to do school now. You know, it's gonna be different, siblings watching siblings when school starts. So I think there's other resources out there and I, and maybe, and I feel like that's what council's kinda saying is like, find out some more information, find out the need and, and let us know.
Well, uh, one, one thing I wanted, wanted to make sure you guys know is that all the directors of Parks and Recreation for Henderson, Clark County, Las Vegas, North Las Vegas, Mesquite, uh, have a weekly, um, telephone chat. And we're basically doing the same thing in all, all the cities. Um, all the protocols are the same. We make sure we're doing all the same, so we standardize the operation for these things. And we're not sitting out on a little island all alone. Every city is doing the same thing. So I can tell you right now, the city, uh, we're small potatoes when it comes to the numbers of kids, uh, here in Boulder City. However, when you talk to Clark County or Las Vegas, they're talking thousands of kids. And, uh, they're, they're following the same protocols that we would put into place and that we're currently using in our summer parks program right now at ABC Park. So.
Councilmember Bridges?
Because I don't have a child in the school, does Shaquanda's school start?
On the 24th, two weeks.
Okay. And that's the day before our next council meeting?
Um, I would, yes.
Yes, okay. I, I guess my directive would be, uh, let's, I wanna, I think, I personally think we should have something up and running and cement what that looks like. Um, how, you know, based on what that demand's gonna look like. I, I guess I'm still hesitant to think that we're going to even reach the 34.
Let me just, let me just, uh, jump in and just clarify a couple of things. Um, let me take you back to the beginning of the pandemic. And one of the things that we looked at as a city is to provide, uh, childcare. Uh, number one was we wanted to make sure that all of, uh, public sector employees, uh, who provide critical services to the community are able to have a place, you know, to drop the kids off so they, they would come back or come to work. In, at the beginning of this, we thought we were gonna be inundated. And it turned out that we had, I'm gonna say 10, 12, uh, that started, uh, kids that started. And keep in mind that it was the safe key program, which was first grade through fifth grade. That's, that was the program. Um, by the end of the third week, we were down to two kids. Um, so we thought we were gonna get inundated, and I think what happened was parents made, uh, you know, alternative plans. They, you know, used family, friends or what have you to take care of their parental responsibilities. In this program, uh, we, you know, we're looking at potentially getting inundated. We were trying, trying to consider kind of the same parameters as at the beginning of the pandemic is how do we deal with the first responders that we want to make sure have come to work, um, and then extend that out. At this point, based on the surveys that we've provided, we don't seem to have a substantial need, uh, within the community or within our, uh, employee population and, uh, and first responders. Um, you know, we certainly can go out to the community, even though we only went to the safe key, you would think that those are the folks that are gonna want that. It could be that there is other families that may need that as well. And we can certainly do that. Uh, but I just want to emphasize to the council that this starts, you know, school starts in two weeks. Right now, given the logistics, given the staffing, the resources within the budget that currently exists within public, uh, I'm sorry, within Parks and Rec, we could stand up a program, uh, which is an extension of the safe key program for up to 10, 10 children based on the staff, uh, that we currently have today. What other municipalities are doing is they are using mostly full-time employees, mostly out of Parks and Rec, because they have programs that are stood down. And so they're transferring those employees to manage and run these programs for the city. We don't have that luxury. We have a couple of folks that, uh, we're utilizing that we're running other programs, and now they're helping out with this program. So I just want to kind of reemphasize, uh, for the council where we're at.
Okay, could we do that? Could, is there a way to start out with a program of up to 10 children? Because that seems to be what that demand current today. And it meets pretty much what you're going to find in terms of part-time employees to cover those positions. You have a place. And I'm assuming that would be a smaller budget than the one that you prepared based on 34 children. I also wouldn't, wasn't sure in terms of the afford, you know, whether families are gonna be able to afford $100 a week. But that, that might be an up for discussion. I just, I, I guess I think that there, there needs to be something, cause even if there's some employees or first responders that still don't have an, uh, have any idea what they're gonna do with their second grader. Um, I, I would like to see something set up, even if it's on a smaller, more micro scale than, than the original suggestion.
Well, the program's set up for, you know, right now for 10 kids, so we could, we could pull that off. Um, again, you're not gonna get the, um, you know, if it, if the, if the program is paid for by CARES money, um, and I know, I heard, um, what happened tonight, um, uh, regarding the CARES money, but, um, that could be possibly done. I mean, and then you just open it up, uh, and if we get more kids and we, and we get more staff, we can open up for more kids, um, if, if that, uh, now, if it goes down to a certain point and we run into a problem where, you know, you're, you're expending a lot of money for just one or two kids and, and you run into that problem as well. So that's the downside of that.
Mayor, Mayor, if I might. Um, so Parks and Rec deals with this a lot, um, with their other programs based on needs. So if they don't book a certain amount of spots, then they don't run that program. So, um, I, I would propose that we, um, continue the extended safe key program, um, through, um, and then reevaluate it, um, September 8th. That will give us two weeks of, into school. We can reevaluate the need, um, but at least provide for the first two weeks of school, um, a continuance of this until we have further information. We can actually see what's happening, what the need is, um, and other, you know, see what other agencies have done, if we can improve or change. Um, you know, in the long run, this is good to be temporary. You know, this isn't gonna be for, hopefully, this is just until kids are back in school. And so, you know, I propose that we continue the program as is until, and reevaluate it at our September 8th city council meeting where we can reassess the needs.
And again, I, I think that's the right approach. Uh, we already have something in place. Uh, we need to find out from the community what the demand is. And I, I do understand you've done some outreach with some surveys. Uh, I, I don't know. I have no idea what, what the actual demand might be, but I, I think it's pretty clear that it's more than 10 children. Uh, that's just my personal feeling.
And I think after two weeks of school, that could change either direction. You know, either kids are gonna go somewhere else or they're gonna, you know, do something different. So, you know, I think two weeks would give us everyone kind of a good feel of what's happening and we can reevaluate at that time.
And my concern is if we say it's only available for 10 children, um, people are gonna think, well, you know, those spots are already taken. I, I think we need to get a true picture of what the demand is before we start saying, you know, we'll do whatever we can because it's the right thing to do. It's absolutely the right thing to do. Um, there are limitations on what we can do though. But to, to communicate to the community, well, we can only do 10 children or 34 children, uh, I don't think they're gonna look at that as a practical solution. I, I think they're gonna think, well, you know, I, I, I need to do something else. So they're probably still going to have to pursue something else. But I would like to put it out to the community in such a way that if you have this need, please let us know and then we can try and find what we can. I, I'm absolutely not extending, you know, a, a plan that we can do it because quite honestly, I think we're limited in what we can do. But I would certainly like to see that we do the most that we possibly can. And I think that's a good suggestion that, you know, well, let me ask you this too, Mr. Hall. If somebody didn't use safe key, and let's say there were a couple of open spots, and they call one week and say, I, I want to enroll my child, uh, for three days a week, can they do that?
Right now, they can. And, uh, we'd probably keep that same operation. Uh, the only thing is, um, if you get the max of 34, then you have people that would be put on a waiting list and, and that would be kind of hard to manage because you don't know, you know, who's gonna, who's gonna stay on what day and, and you'd have to manage that aspect of it. But right now, if you, if you want to put them in for three days, we allow that.
Okay. Um, you know, we may need to look at HR to see what they have for any scheduling type software that they have, uh, rather than trying to keep track of all this on sheets. Again, I don't know what the capabilities are. The point I'm trying to make is, we need to think outside the box. You know, th- this whole pandemic has put us outside the box.
Yes.
And we need to not say, well, here's how we did it five years ago. Um, and I agree too. This better not last a whole bunch longer, but, uh, I can certainly see it going through the end of the year. And I think we need to keep that in mind, that parents' needs are gonna change during the year. You know, they may start out thinking, well, I have a plan for this. And for whatever reason, that plan's not working. So I think we need some flexibility in it. But I really think we need to get an idea from the community exactly what the demand is. Or, or at least to the best of our ability to do that and not just say, well, you know, the first 34 get it, um.
I think, uh, no, the Parks and Rec Department, um, is open. Uh, and if, if people are interested in, in that, they, I think they should contact us so we can keep a master list and, and keep you guys appraised at what's go- what's going on. Um, that many people utilize our, our facilities and our programs and, um, they, they contact our office on a regular basis. So that we could, we could develop a list and find out. I just didn't want to put that list out or put the word out before council had a chance to go over the program and approve anything. And then see, you know, and have all these expectations of the parents sitting there and not being able to tell them yes or no.
Well, I, I understand that.
We can do that now that we've, we've discussed this matter.
Well, I, I think that's, that's a good judgment on your part. Um, you know, my concern is we're in a situation here where time is of the essence on a lot of these things, and we don't have very many solutions. I mean, that, that's just the reality. We don't have many solutions. But if we have no idea what the demand is, what's actually out there, then us sitting here saying, well, you know, let's start or continue this or do this, uh, I, I'm not sure we're providing, uh, a good support to the community by restricting our conversation about it. Uh, we need to have a very real conversation with the community. What's the need? What's our ability to provide it?
Correct. And, you know, right now, by keeping the existing program going, we can find that out real, real quick. Um, uh, once we make the announcement and get Lisa to possibly put it on Facebook and get the word out through, um, uh, other means, we can find out real quick how, what the need is. And then we'll know, depending on the, the staff we're losing for our existing program and the staff we're bringing on and training for- we're bringing on and training for, you know, the proposed program, I think we can make that work.
Well, and I think we've had some good suggestions here tonight, too, as far as others that may be able to help with this program. How do we reach those people and let them know there's a need? You know, I understand there's a posting process that's been gone through, but, you know, if there's a mother or father out there who can come in for six hours and they've got two children of their own, you know, maybe we need to look at that flexibility.
So Mayor and Council, I just want to make sure that I've captured this correctly. I really heard really two things from the council, from the discussions. Number one is community needs assessment, to go out to the community and reach out and try to get that feedback. And secondly, that we move forward with the program within the resources that we currently have, which is the maximum of 10 children going forward. We will be back to the council by the 8th of September to give an update as to where we're at, you know, the first two weeks, if you will, of school, and then hopefully have the feedback from the community needs assessment so that we can provide additional information to council of what additional needs there may be and how we deal with that, with those needs if they're identified. Lastly, I do want to mention to the council that we, regardless of the program, that, you know, we do move forward, that employee or these part-time individuals that are helping with children, we do still need to make sure that we run them through the checks, and that may present a problem in terms of quickly getting staff on board, or even volunteers for that matter. You know, as you heard earlier this evening, that Metro's backlog by 3,000, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, that's the number that they were talking about during the meetings.
So there are actually discussions about how do we push that out to the local law enforcement agencies to assist with that backlog. So it is creating, you know, this pandemic's creating issues, you know, all over that, you know, we're just having to address as these unintended consequences come up. So that's what I have, I just want to make sure that I understand that correctly, and either the council can do a motion, or if I'm reading the nods, I think that is the direction. Huh? Okay.
Councilmember Hoskins?
In the posting, I think it would be advisable to put out something that volunteers are needed, or however you want to, you know, post it, but let them know that we need people. Would that be right, Ms. Roger?
Well, again, working with kids, you have to go through a background check, and you have to be, we have to make sure they're safe, and so I'd work with the HR to make sure that, you know, if they're volunteer, they still have to go through that same program and be trained in. There are certain things that we have to train them in, so, and that's, we got two weeks to do it, so that's, it's going to create some issues, but we'll give it a good old college try.
Yeah, and again, I think it's an error to look at this as two weeks. I think we need to look at it longer term than that. I understand what the school district is doing, but the school district has done their thing. They put out pronouncements about what they're doing, and then they look to the local governments and say, now you have to fix the rest of this. So let's not put a two-week thing on this, let's look at this as a start of a process, I think is very important.
Yeah, I agree, and, you know, by increasing or keeping the existing program going, I think we can really find out how many kids really need this program, how many parents really need it, so.
Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion. First of all, I would like to make a motion that, A, we continue the current Safe Key all-day program that's currently accepting 10 children, that we conduct a community needs assessment to see how many children are actually in need of this, and also, do we call them assets, an asset assessment, to see what getting people to perform supervision in terms of licensing, in terms of, you know, how many people are really interested in doing that. I hesitate to put a timeline on that, you know, it is, I'm sure that, like you were saying, the licensing process is, they're talking about opening up Henderson PD to do it, but even then, it's going to take a while, but to move, is that sufficient for a motion? Okay.
Councilmember Foldo, I think, you know, you had had some, do you want to offer a friendly amendment to that motion?
Um, can I just?
Okay. Would you like to second and then offer a friendly amendment?
Second, and then amend to bring back this item to city council on September 8th city council meeting. I don't know. Was there anything else I said that was, like, profound that I need to add to the motion?
Yes, I think you expressed it very well, the need for this, but I believe that covers it. Councilmember Bridges, are you amenable to the amendment?
Absolutely.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, that brings us to item number 22, City Manager Report.
Mayor, are we doing the, was item 21 removed? Okay, sorry about that. So Mayor and Council, under City Managers' Report, there's nothing unusual, routine transactions, and myself or the City Finance Director is available if there are any questions.
Thank you. Any questions regarding the report? All right, we'll move on then to item number 24. This is our last public comment period. Public comment during this period, maybe on any issue, there's still a limit of five minutes per commentator. Anyone wishing to speak during public comment may call 702-589-9629. That number again, 702-589-9629.
Yes, I have public comment.
Go ahead.
Yes, good evening again, Council. Fred Volz for the record. Two aspects of the council's discussion about agenda item number 23 deserve a reaction from the public. The public is owed a full disclosure and clear explanation from Councilmember Bridges as to why she abstained from the discussion and vote. What is her conflict of interest? We in the public, she is supposed to represent, deserve a clear answer, but we were not provided with one. That the city attorney would appoint as his substitute, an attorney who works for him as a prosecutor, and who forthrightly admitted he had no legal expertise in the retainer agreement, the subject of agenda item number 23 suggests malpractice and gross incompetence on the city attorney's part, worthy of a state bar complaint. Is it true the city attorney didn't know or bother to ask his appointee if he could handle tonight's assignment? The city attorney's duty is to ensure adequate legal representation of the city's interests, and if he can't personally do it, he has an absolute duty to ensure he appointed an appropriate, non-conflicted, and qualified agent as his proxy. The city attorney abjectly failed to perform this job duty tonight, and I would ask that these comments be added to the record. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the phone line is available. Anyone else wishing to speak in the last public comment period?
Public comment?
Yes, I have a public comment.
Go ahead.
All right, this is Judy DeShane, and I want to say that I 100% agree with Mr. Volz's comments on both Councilwoman Bridges and on the city attorney. In addition, I would like to comment that when you put out the thing for the school substitute, that you state what grades you, I mean, there is a big difference between first grade and 11th grade, but what grades you think you will be able to handle so parents will know whether their child is even going to qualify to be able to be assisted, because in many cases, I think some of these kids probably just need someone to oversee them and sit on top of them to make sure they do their online courses. I do know of a couple of children like that, but they are, you know, they aren't first graders anymore. So I would think that it would be good if the city, when they put out the notice to parents, that they let them know that and let them know the cost, by all means, because that is going to keep a number, I think the, well, I think the $100 a week is very reasonable, it also might not be good for parents that have two or three children that they would like to have in this program, just to make sure the kids do their online classes, and thank you.
Thank you. The phone line is available. Anyone wishing to call, the phone number is 702-589-9629 for our final public comment period. This is the final public comment period. All right, hearing no others, we will close the public comment.
There's two.
Oh, excuse me, we have written comments. Go ahead, Madam City Clerk.
This comment is provided by Tanya Vici. There is a sense of distrust with this mayor and city council for various reasons, a few I would like to address with the hopes that the mayor and the council will realize how they are received by the public. Also, I'd like to offer a few pointers on how to better communicate with the public. First, I think it would be helpful to the city council if they answer their emails and follow up on items where they promised to follow up. I have addressed a concern about the lack of transparency and the temperament of the mayor and certain council members on Facebook. I also addressed a concern about an incestuous relationship with regard to a council member and the mayor. By incestuous, I am referring to the definition listed in Merriam-Webster's dictionary, which reads, "An excessively or improperly intimate or exclusive relationship with," an example as follows, "Any mainstream fashion magazines who have an incestuous relationship with advertisers can undermine their integrity." I sent an email to Councilwoman Foldo with no response, asking the question of how the mayor came to nominate her for the position. I also asked for a CV card or a biography of who she is and wanted to request a virtual meeting to address concerns I have with agenda items and voting. I sent the same email to the mayor. My concerns were why some business owners are being treated unfairly. Grant Turner and Brett Runyon were, in my opinion, badgered over RDA money and given a less than requested amount than others. I find it odd as to why. I find it odd what is being done to the Chamber of Commerce, too. The list goes on, and I find it coincidental that anyone who disagrees with the mayor's public stance on issues or the BCCA are denied certain funds or the right to talk and present, such as Jill with the chamber. And I find it odd that so many of us on Facebook started talking after Ms. Foldo finally responded to me on the platform, only to discover many of our emails are never answered. Either the council needs some training on communication and using email, or there is an IT issue that needs to be addressed. Additionally, I'm suggesting that the city council speak to their family members about using social media. A certain person has been very vocal publicly and on DM on Facebook, claiming to be related to a councilwoman because they have the same last name. This same person has made false allegations in regards to sexual abuse and so on. I am not sure if city council member is really related to this person, who is using her name to push hate in an agenda, but I suggest if the council is having family members post anything on their behalf, including allegations about sexual abuse, et cetera, that they carefully consider what the repercussions are in regards to using the councilperson's name and position for leverage and intimidation. Also, some of the content can be considered libel. It's not professional if this is true, and I suggest you talk to your family members. Also, one business owner received a personal call from a council member about a post I put up on Facebook. Is this typical policy, or is this an aroundabout way to intimidate that business owner from liking my free speech and exercising his own? I find that phone call incestuous on its own and in line with the perceived intimidating nature and tantrum-like temperament of this council. I will be running for mayor in the next election. You may not like my words, my request for information, or my criticism of your very unprofessional behavior, in my opinion, but many of us citizens don't care for the lack of transparency, or the ongoing social media intimidation, or tit-for-tat treatment. of transparency or the ongoing social media intimidation or tit-for-tat treatment we are getting because our ideas and perspective don't align with the city council. Grant and Brett shouldn't get less RDA dollars because the mayor has an issue with the RDA or grant. What is written into law is what is written into law, and business owners shouldn't get calls from council members because they liked my comment on Facebook. And I shouldn't be outed as a sexual abuse survivor like that victim blaming is ever okay, because a self-claimed member of a councilwoman's family doesn't like or understand the definition of a word I used to describe what I consider to be the current culture in City Hall. It's called free speech. It's called you men and women being held accountable for your actions. It's called working for every member of the community, not just a certain group or the BCCA. See you at the polls. Tanya Vici. The next is from Duncan McCoy. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am Duncan McCoy, resident of Boulder City and former councilman. I wish to speak regarding the present effort to terminate the city manager and city attorney. This effort really comes as no surprise, as shortly after the last municipal election, newly elected council members talked around town about firing the city clerk, city manager, and city attorney. What is a surprise is the timing of the effort. Boulder City is in the middle of the COVID-19 pandemic and an accompanying economic disaster the likes of which this community has probably never seen before. The city's finance director has been quoted as estimating perhaps a 40% decline in revenues to the city. This economic disaster has yet to fully unfold and may be even worse than the 40% estimate. Whatever the revenue decline turns out to be, it is going to be serious. It will have a profound impact on city operations, and it needs to be handled with all the skill the city can bring to the problem. Whatever individual members of the city council think about the city manager and the city attorney, they certainly know a good deal more about the operational and legal affairs of the city than do any members of city council. If they are fired, the city loses their special skills, skills that will be sorely needed to get the city through the pandemic and the economic collapse. If they are fired, the city will eventually hire a replacement city manager and replacement city attorney. These new officials will be, for all intents and purposes, beginners. I do not think Boulder City needs beginners running the city in the midst of the problems we face. I do not doubt the city council's authority to fire the city manager and the city attorney. Both are at-will employees and occupy their positions, subject to the council's pleasure. But I don't think it is a good idea to fire either one at this point. I think the best thing the city council can do right now is drop the whole thing and try to reforgue a working relationship with the city manager and the city attorney. Failure to do that is likely to result in a whopping big amount of money going out the door as the city manager and city attorney depart, money which the city can ill afford, by the way. And when the dust settles and replacements for then-former city manager and city attorney are found, the city's operations and legal affairs will be handled by beginners. Council could not have picked a worse time to do this. Thank you for listening, Duncan McCoy. And that concludes the written public comments.
Thank you. And with no additional calls, we'll go ahead and close our final public comment period and move to our last agenda item, number 25, Council Reports. Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, I'm going to make it brief because I was going to talk about the committee I've been involved in, and it all centered around, pretty much on a macro scale, what we're dealing with locally. And the other is I wanted to reiterate that people who have issues in terms of paying their rent utilities, Boulder City did receive CHAP's money, and it's being administered through emergency aid of Boulder City. And there's no reason why anybody in Boulder City should have to worry about being evicted September 1. Also, they shouldn't go hungry. There's a lovely food bank there, too. And that's all I'd like to share. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams?
Thank you, Mayor. July 25th, the Board of Health held its regular meeting. Unfortunately, for personal matters, I was unable to attend. However, I did review the meeting. As many might know, our testing capabilities and accessibilities remain very robust. Unfortunately, that means that our contact tracing program has simply not been able to keep up. To try to respond to that, the Health District will be hiring more individuals and personnel to handle the contact tracing. We're looking to hopefully triple or even quadruple by the end of this month, that number. But even if we are able to do that, we still won't be at the recommended number of where we should be, but it should hopefully give us a little bit of breathing room with, with where we are. With regards to the testing, we are seeing an increase in hospitalizations still. At this moment, hospitals, hospital capacity does remain stable. But of course, this is, this is where we're at right now. I think the most important figure for people to note is that, I hear a lot of comments that, well, because of our robust testing, because we are able to test so many people that, that is why we are seeing Nevada and Southern Nevada as being hotspots. The reality is, is that we are seeing an increase in positives, in the percentage of people who are taking the test, and we have been seeing an increase in the positive rates for the, since the end of May. So we are still seeing that. It's not simply because we are testing more that we see more. It is because this disease is spreading. And lastly, deaths are on the rise. This, people are not dying due to a hoax. This is the realities and the consequences of living during a global pandemic. So please, I ask everybody to maintain and try to, try to encourage best practices in remaining safe. Try to limit your interactions with the public where you can. When you can't, be sure you are wearing a mask in public, and try to maintain your safe distance. This isn't about the individual and whether they are worried about their personal health. This is about being concerned and making sure that we take into account those in our community whose personal health may be at jeopardy. And limiting the spread is what will help to keep those who may be less fortunate, who do have underlying health conditions that we are not aware of, to really help them simply try and live their lives during this horrible time like the rest of us. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hoskins?
Yes, I'd just like to say that I've been continuing to get tested every two weeks, and I do appreciate the fire department doing this for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Folda?
Yes, thank you. One of the items that was removed from tonight's City Council meeting, we were looking for volunteers for both our allotment and our audit review committee. So if you feel like you could fill those positions, please, please get your volunteer form into the city clerk's office, and we'll be seeing that at our next City Council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. There's been some postings out on social media, and I know I've mentioned it before, changes with the Regional Transportation Commission bus schedule for Boulder City. It has not been approved yet, but the RTC staff is going to be recommending to the board at Thursday's meeting that service from Boulder City, which the change would have brought it to Water Street in Henderson, will do a touch at Water Street, but then extend down to the Galleria Mall. And that was in response to the feedback that they received from riders here in Boulder City. So they will be extending that route from Boulder City down to the Galleria Mall. The time will run one, about once an hour. I think the RTC is really trying to do whatever they can to keep service running. There were two other routes in Las Vegas that had been designated for cancellation. And again, listening to the people who are riding on those particular routes, they've been able to reestablish them, not quite at the frequency it was before, but they have been able to reestablish them. So if you're going from Boulder City all the way downtown, the estimate is it would take you about 15 minutes longer because you're going to have to make a transfer down in Henderson. But it costs, on average, three times as much for a rider here in Boulder City as it does across the average of the RTC operation. So they are trying to work very hard with Boulder City to maintain service for us. And I would just like to talk also about the, the spread of the virus. Had a meeting this morning with the Las Vegas Convention and Visitors Authority. CES is canceled. The SEMA Car Show is canceled. You know, when you start looking down the list of all the shows that are being canceled in Las Vegas, this is going to have a far-reaching effect. You know, those are conventions that reach out into next year, that they're already making the decisions to cancel those conventions. Anybody who's been around here for very long knows what type of show CES is and the number of people it brings to Las Vegas. That's huge that we've lost that. If we want our economy to improve, you need to wear a mask. You need to pay attention to social distancing. You need to keep person-to-person contact limited whenever possible. We need people to come to Las Vegas, and the way we do that is by making sure we have a safe environment for those people to come to. With that, we'll adjourn the meeting, and thank you all very much.